You're ready to go? Okay, Tracy's ready to go and so I will call this meeting back to order. The board previously met in closed session to discuss personnel items. And now we're reconvening back into open session and I will start with the pledge of allegiance. So if you are able, please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're starting off tonight with our community engagement session. And this is for the school district of Amory. Board of Education is going to discuss the 2025-2026 school calendar, as well as a proposal for a possible year-round school calendar for the future. The Board of Education invites and encourages feedback from and discussion with community regarding the school calendar. No action will be taken by the School District of Amory Board of Education on this topic as part of this community engagement session. Community feedback on all their topic is reserved for community comments later in the regular school board meeting agenda. All right, and with that, I will offer it up with Dr. Durkler.
Okay, all right, we'll all run it through it month by month. July, there's nothing, or July of 2025, there isn't much happening here other than the wrap-up of some summer school activities. At the end of August, we have in-service, which begins on Tuesday, the 26th, runs three days. It traditionally has run three days and Friday off. Monday, the 1st of September is off because that's Labor Day. We can't start school until the, after September 1st. And that happens to be exactly on September 1st this year. So we have school starting on Tuesday, September 2nd. Those circles aren't for everybody. Those are 4K parent-teacher conference dates. The big circles and the little circles mean different things. We have in-service on Monday, the 29th of September. Our first round of parent-teacher conferences combined with in-service is the week of October 6th. We have an off day at the end of that week because staff have two 8:00 evenings that week. That's on October 10th. In-service on November 3rd. Thanksgiving is locked in for us, obviously, the 26th, 27th, and 28th. Christmas, a little bit of an oddity this year. We don't really have the luxury of many days off before Christmas for travel purposes because it would be wasteful to not have school on the 22nd and 23rd, at least in my mind it would be. And then we have Christmas break running from 24th through the 4th. It would probably be impractical to come back to school on Friday, January 2nd, even though it's just one day. End of semester at the high school, end of second term at the high school is Friday, or Thursday, the 15th of January. And then we have in-service on the 16th, so that's an all-school day. Second round of conferences combined with in-service is the week of February 9th. Spring break, this is a draft calendar. Spring break is subject to change, so please don't schedule your vacations thinking that this is for sure the week. We have to dance around music schedule, our testing schedule, and our athletics schedule. And news flash, you're going to run into something in March. There's no way to schedule around everything. So that's in the hands of Jeff Fern right now to make his best assessment. We have off on Good Friday, which is April 3rd. We have an in-service on April 20th, so there's no school there. And then the last circle on the calendar is Memorial Day on Monday, the 25th of May. And then lastly, you have in-service the evening of Thursday, the 4th of June, and then Friday morning, the 5th of June, which mirrors what we do this year in regards to our in-service schedule. So those are the highlights. And if you have questions or if anyone here has feedback, this would be the time.
So last day, June 4th, for students, right? Graduation, I guess 17th.
Graduation's the 17th, that's where it's typically.
And I know, I guess several years ago, we used to kind of rotate every other year with spring break.
We have, yes.
But I guess recently, I mean, the feedback I kind of hear is that more and more people are enjoying the spring break.
Can do it or not do it. When we've asked on survey, a third have said yes, a third have said no, and a third said I don't care, which is not really helpful. But, yeah.
Yeah, it always used to be a pretty even split, three ways.
Two, yes.
I guess the last few years, I've just kind of maybe heard more people that.
Well, the benefit of not having a spring break is you could likely finish your school year five days sooner and you could finish your school year, you know, Friday, the 29th of May, potentially, if you wanted. For those who want to do that. There are three days built into this calendar, just like there is in the present year. Three days meaning three days for inclement weather. And with this calendar, you still meet your instructional minutes requirement and still have three days built in for that flexibility of where we live.
I can't remember, when do we vote on this, or when?
Typically, we've done it in January, so there's still some time.
Do you know if there are districts having spring break other than?
New Richmond's done it many years in February. For two reasons, one, it's less of a conflict they have deemed, and second, airfare is much cheaper in February, which it probably is. The trick with February, and we have only one former athletic director in the room, to my knowledge, and that's Josh, you don't want to be on spring break when your girls are playing sectional final basketball somewhere because that's a problem. In February, tournament series is a pretty big deal with wrestling, boys' basketball, hockey, girls' basketball. And that's basically, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, middle of February through middle of March, you're going to run into a tournament series.
Yeah, I mean, the whole winter sports playoff thing, wrestling, hockey, basketball, you're talking February 13th, 20, 27th into the beginning of March there.
You're going to run into something. And you could say, hey, our team's not going to be any good. Well, if it is, you might be in trouble.
We just looked up state testing. At the forward test is the, starts the week of the 16th.
16th of March?
Yeah, yeah, but we typically don't test the first week because you have a four-week period to get it in.
So by this calendar, the 23rd would work, right?
Yeah.
But you wouldn't want to do it the week after either, probably, or?
We would avoid Monday. It just depends, you know, like, like 8th grade, we would start that week towards the middle of it. And then the rest of them, we would start, because 8th grade has, and 4th grade have more assessment dates. But I think we could fit in. The problem right now is the changes in Act 20 and what it's doing with the fast bridge testing and then the required.
So for Act 20, we have to screen with Ames Web 45 days on or before the last day of school, which is, according to this calendar, is March 31st. So we look at, we would have to screen our students for a week with Ames Web, and then you have to run a diagnostic assessment 10 calendar days after that. So if we kept it like this, we would Act 20 on the 23rd, fast bridge on the 30th, forward on the 6th, forward on the 13th. It'd be four weeks of state testing for.
An Act 20 is a mandate of us, that's not our.
That's a new statement. To be honest, the spring break moved up a week would be better just to fit in what the intermediate and elementary have to do. It's not going to affect me, but.
What about ACT dates, Josh? Do you have any on those?
It's not posted, but my best guess is that it's going to be Tuesday, March 10th, is my best guess based off of this year's information.
Tom will retract this.
Of course it would be.
We retract my statement then. That's the ACT test, that, you know, there's only three opportunities. They don't have like weeks to do it. They have this day, this day. So we definitely don't want to be on that date. But I think, you know, as long as we're considering, is there spring break or not? We're going to have to, you know, come back with more information hopefully soon on what those testing dates are going to be, for sure.
Jess, you'd mentioned the testing on the 23rd?
Yes.
And there's, and that, is that just one day and then you do it again, you do another test on the 30th? So you're not testing that whole week, just one day?
We test the whole week.
You test the whole week?
Students, depending on grade level, kindergarten, based whether it's fall, winter, or spring, either have five or two assessments. Second grade has three to five. It kind of varies based on what grade level it is. Third grade has two. So per Act 20, if we screen Ames Web on the 23rd, and again, this is before the 45th day of, last day of school, we would have to Ames Web them on the 23rd, and then you have 10 calendar days to do a diagnostic screener, which means we would have to do it the week of the 30th. There's no exceptions. And then we jump right into the forward. And generally, we try to have a buffer on the end of the forward for makeup testing if kids are out sick. But if we stuck with this window, we would not have a buffer here at the IS to finish it. We would have two weeks to get all kids in. And we do usually take two weeks to screen our kids in the forward exam.
Have you done Ames Web testing prior to?
We just started it today.
Okay.
It is mandated for January, and then we will do it again in the spring, 45 days before the last day of school this year. We were told, shorter time, and what we're discovering is it takes a significant more amount of time than what we were initially told. So we're piloting groups at each elementary and intermediate school this week and into next week so then we can come back to the table, have a conversation about how we're going to screen in January and in the spring. So kind of just dipping our toes in to see if there's any adjustments we need to make for moving into the winter and spring.
Okay. Something to be mindful of, anyway, moving forward. Obviously, we're not approving this calendar tonight, but that's something to be more mindful of. We'll kind of have probably some more information when you come back with those results.
Yeah, but like Sean said, there's going to be something almost every single week, for sure.
Testing just seems to kind of really throw a wrench in versus probably anything else, but.
Also have your musical and your dramatic production, and that could potentially be an issue as well. If you put it into February. You just got to dance around that, too.
Okay. Any more input from the board on this? More questions? Again, just in the exploring phase. Tracy, do you have something?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
Have we considered Friday night graduation at all, as opposed to Sunday?
Well, the last time it was, the last time it was asked was on the 2000, that would be the 2015 community survey about Friday of Memorial Day weekend. Now, maybe that's not what you're asking. But that was, of the CISA schools, when I did the count of the 39 schools, 22 did it on that Friday. But the survey said 81% said no, and 19% said yes. So in Amory, the answer was no. So, but another Friday, I don't know. What do you think, Josh?
Do you still think that would be the answer?
I have no idea.
There's so many schools do Friday night. And for someone who has to come in for graduation on a Sunday afternoon, it really would be nice to do a Friday night graduation.
The perk, what people have shared with me, the perk is you have all weekend long to do your party. Travel reasons, people have a chance to get there if it's on a Sunday, but, I mean. I don't know, how do you feel, Josh?
I have long been in favor of a Friday night ceremony. I get the luxury on that last week. Osceola goes on the Friday before us, so I watch their ceremony and I time it. I watched the Clear Lake ceremony. You know, I watched the Balden ceremony. That's what principals do.
Fun Friday night.
Yeah, fun, fun, fun Friday night. So, yeah, I'm all in on Friday night graduation ceremony.
Are you proposing Friday?
Friday, the.
13th of May? No, 15th.
Sounds great.
Sorry, 15th.
Friday the 15th, that'd be a beautiful day.
Is that what you're saying, Tracy? You're increasing any of that?
I haven't even looked at the dates. I just know we keep talking.
Because Friday, the 22nd is the Friday of Memorial.
No, I don't want anything to do with Memorial Day weekend.
That would be tough.
It's the 15th or the 29th, based on this calendar.
We do our rehearsal that Friday anyways.
So you were in Norway, you would have been on the 17th?
Yeah, we rehearse on Friday morning, have our last stuff with the seniors. The stage stays up for two days, and then we do it on Sunday. For me, it's, makes life easier. No objections from me.
I'll show up whenever I got to show up. I'm not married to a Sunday.
I do remember the last time we had that survey, and it was pretty convincing.
Oh, it was 81-19, I remember it.
Yeah, so. But, I don't know, maybe, maybe.
Maybe it was the Memorial Day thing that got people.
And that could be, yeah. I would probably stay away from Memorial Day weekend, but.
We could throw it out on social media, maybe, and there's time to.
Some people are going to like it, some people are going to say no.
Of course, I mean, that's everything, right?
I say just make a decision and do it at that point, because.
I mean, I think, you know, it's logistical to get feedback from the community, you know, of whatever.
We want grandma to be there, and she travels four hours.
Right.
That's what you're going to hear. We want our family to be able to come to the party. I can tell you every single feedback thing that's going to happen.
Yeah, I, yeah, absolutely. I can see where it would be beneficial. I can see where the drawbacks would be. I can see, but, you know, obviously, it, and I think it's obviously going to vary, too, from just the class to class, right? I mean, the parents that you have in your.
I think you're going to get the same feedback from every single class. The same arguments for and against.
Okay. Well, something to consider, and we'll move along with the, as we move along with this calendar approval, so. Any more community questions or input feedback from people that are here tonight on the calendar? Sean, do you have anything left on that?
I don't, but it does say in the community engagement introduction that a proposal for a possible year-round calendar as well. In order to be able to do the year-round calendar, the first thing you need to do is strip yourself of all of your preconceived notions about what a calendar for school would be. And at that point, start building it from scratch. You don't have to build it from September 1st. You can build it from any date in the year forward. What most districts do is they start building it forward from July 1st. You have 40 days on and then 50 days off. Forty, not 40, days, days, 40 school days. So it's eight weeks on, three weeks off, eight weeks on, three weeks off, until you get all the way snaked back into the next year. And then you end that calendar year, so to speak, on June 30th. The big argument against year-round school is, I know my kid going to school every single day, Monday through Friday, all year long. That's not what it is. That would be unsustainable. The two other big arguments are the sports calendar. How do you match up? We're off for three weeks, but yet we got basketball practice every day. How do I get my kids there if they're going to go on a vacation in February now? And the last is a budgetary impact. Because if you do a year-long, a year-round calendar, you're adding about 20 to 25 instructional days for a staff person, support staff person, and a certified staff person. If they're working 20, 25 more days, that obviously has a budget impact because you're open, the lights are on for 20, 25 more, and are you compensating your staff for 20, 25 more days? You would have to, or they would probably not do too pleased. So that's a financial impact, and you're not getting any additional aid from the state. You're simply open for more days. You're meeting the instructional minutes requirement. They don't care that you're way past it. Not many districts in Wisconsin have chosen to do it. It's more of a southern part of the United States and a western part of the United States thing. If you want me to give a proposal, I bring one.
Do we have districts in north, northern Wisconsin that are doing this?
There was one district in Eau Claire, or one school in Eau Claire, and one school in La Crosse that did it. Those are the only.
Isn't there somebody up north, though, doing it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Like, way up north?
I don't know.
I thought there was somebody way up north doing this.
Maybe, I don't know.
There's a couple in Milwaukee that are doing it.
North, John, north. And have we looked at, like, what those schools, no other, no extra funding to those schools to do this?
There's no extra funding if you're going to have more days of contact.
Okay.
What I like about that schedule is you don't get the big, big summer slide. It happens, you know what I mean? But what I don't like about it is the, you know, I know if you're a school, like middle school, if the sporting schedule still hasn't changed because everyone else is on the same system, having, my kids have a hard time getting here than if we don't have school and they have sports events and practices every day. That's a, that's a difficult thing, yeah. You know, I get you can't base everything around a few of those areas, but I think for it to be really realistic, it would have to be a large, like a whole conference going together on it and saying, this is where we're going. But, or the, but then you still have state when things can start and not, and it's a big issue.
Our high school kids log a lot of hours working in the summer, you know, saving up for college futures, careers. So they, a lot of them have full-time jobs, June, July, and August.
And if we had, if we did do this, like, if we looked at a year-round school, obviously, we wouldn't have summer school unless we had it on the weeks off and.
You'd have to be creative.
Could we call it summer school? And then we get the funding for summer school? Is that?
Those are all questions I would have to ask the Department of Public.
Just wondering. Because if it's over and above our contact hours that is mandated by, I don't know how, I don't, you know, I'd have to sit down and look at that, what the calendar would look like.
It's instructional minutes. You can add in summer school instructional minutes, but you can't say, we're going to school 218 days. We got so many more instructional minutes, give us more state aid. That doesn't work like that.
Right, right.
I'm assuming there's a lot of maintenance that's just happening on the grounds during the summer?
Yeah, there is.
You're spreading out your ability to do that work as well.
You are, you are.
The nice thing is with summer school, for those, for specific students that need additional remit. Now, I understand kids take summer school for a lot of different reasons. There's a lot of enrichment things, too. But for those kids that need a lot of intervention, most of them are then going year-round because they're here an extra five weeks. You know, they're half-days, but they're still coming in and getting that time. So I wish we would have more kids participate in it, but.
Okay. Any community feedback from anybody that's in attendance tonight about year-round schooling? Or what the community's thoughts are about this for community engagement session purposes?
I think that most schools do the year-round schooling because they're, they're at a higher capacity for district than, and they're shuffling kids out. That's just been my feedback. I have a friend in South Carolina whose kids go six weeks on, six weeks off. And they do that because of those off weeks, they bring in group B. So their school is open and staffed all the time, but it was, their population is so big for that area. So they're just maximizing the use in their buildings.
And limiting cla, like, limiting class sizes, then, so that it's not?
I don't know what their class sizes are.
I mean, so that it wasn't, you don't have all of those kids at one time. So you're, yeah, like you said, group A, group B, kind of like a cohort kind of a thing? Gotcha. That makes, makes good sense if you're.
Well, just let's down on the expense of having another building that's, I mean, it costs something to have a building open. So they're using the same building, it's costing the same amount of money every day. But overall, I think it's probably less expensive than having an additional building or additional buildings.
Sure.
So I think in the bigger cities, like we're mentioning, Milwaukee and Eau Claire and La Crosse, you got to look at the demographics and how their schedule is. I don't.
So I'll bring this back in January in a more finalized version, once we have everything hammered out. And you can act on it then or table it if you see something that's of concern.
Is the board interested in having Sean pursue a year-round option? I mean, I'm not, if the board isn't interested in it, not that we're voting on anything, but is there interest? Should we pursue it?
I'm not interested in it myself.
Yeah, I don't know if I would be interested either. At this point, I mean, I can see reasons for it, but with all the schedules of athletic schedules, music competitions, testing schedules, and I, I think there's something to be said about a summer vacation as well, but I don't, I would, personally, I wouldn't put a lot of time into it, but if others feel differently, I'm.
Open to explore, sure. Gwen, what's your thoughts?
I'm not in favor of him spending a lot of time looking at it because listening to comments, it doesn't sound like it's necessarily what's right for Amory at this time if no one else in our conference is doing it. My opinion is, I think we'd have parents up in arms trying to figure out daycare situations and everything else. And we already know that's an issue. So I would say at this time, a no, from me.
Joel, what's your feelings about this? Looking into it?
I just think the process in itself, you'd be asking to change the entire culture of what's been going on. And I think even if it was the best thing in the world, you'd have to change this entire system and the culture that exists right now. And I don't think it's going to happen, so I think we're wasting time.
And just one more thing, I don't know that we'd get staff buy-in. I think that before we would do anything, we'd have to definitely survey our teachers and support staff and our kitchen staff, et cetera, et cetera, to see if they're interested in working 20 to 25 more days.
Tom's on board.
I'm here anyway, so that I won't be as lonely.
You won't be lonely.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that the board at this time would be interested in exploring a whole lot more. So I think, you know, not waste, not spending a whole lot of time exploring those options. I think your time is probably spent elsewhere. But obviously, good things to keep in mind about the calendar moving forward. Testing, spring break concerns, travel concerns with Christmas, and Friday night graduation seems like the bigger considerations that we'll have moving forward if there's no other conflicts, if anybody else sees anything. And last year, I kind of posted this draft out on social media and got some community feedback. Sometimes people have a better eye on it. I can't plan tomorrow, so I'm not the gal to do this, so, yeah.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
For Jess.
Yeah.
The, the Act 20 that you talked about, are we anticipating that those dates and that type of schedule is going to be every year going forward? Or we think there'll be an anticipation of changing it because it does happen to fall when most schools are talking about spring break?
You know, I, Act 20 was developed and mandated knowing where the forward was and knowing, I guess, how we screen our youngest learners. So I would not anticipate a change in their dates, you know, when they say 45 days before the, before the last day of school. That gives each district a little bit of flexibility, right, in their own calendar? So I would not, I would not anticipate a change from them.
So whatever we're dealing with this year should be an ongoing problem?
Correct.
Any further discussion on the school calendar? Okay, I'm officially going to call the community engagement session over, and we'll move along right into closed session, as it was posted to follow immediately after the community engagements. And we're pretty much right on time here at 6:28. So I'll get into the consent agenda items. And I actually had vouchers this month. Everything looked in order, had a couple of questions, cleared those up. So I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the board vouchers as presented and reviewed by myself. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Dale. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those oppose, please signify by saying no. None motion passed, the consent agenda items are approved. Next, we'll move into the administrative committee and department reports, starting with our administrative reports.
All right, at the high school, some things that have been going on. We, FFA returned a couple of weeks ago from their national trip to Indianapolis. Last weekend, we had the school play game of tiaras. Kids did a great job with that. We had a very nice Veterans Day program, November 11th. FCC LA kids put on a great breakfast for the veterans again, always a good event. And the winter sports season has kicked off. Coming up, we've got the Fall Band Concert tomorrow night for both high school and middle school, 6:30. Thursday, at the high school, we've got practice ACT test for 9th through 11th grade. And then we've got a group called Comedy Sports coming in for the end of the day, a little reward for the kids. December 2nd, High School Honors Choir Concert at Amory. That's the upper Midwest, St. Croix Valley. All the schools send their best choir kids here, our turn to host. Our turn to host, and we'll have kids participating as well. And then December 9th, High School Choir, and then Jazz Band Concert as well. I think that's middle school and high school jazz band on December 9th. Thomas?
All right. Any questions for him? You keep asking them if you want. Just kidding. Middle School Boys Basketball is off to full swing, and the seventh and eighth grade are having a nice start. I was at the games in the eighth grade, had a big rousing victory, which I've never seen it more excited. So Band and Choir, like, like Josh said, we have our first concert tomorrow night, so I'm looking forward to that. We have two big field trips coming up. Our seventh grade will be going to the Guthrie to see a Christmas Carol. And in, on December 6th, our sixth graders will be going to Minneapolis Children's Theater to see How a Grinch Stole Christmas. The Big Five Social Skills, we're kind of finishing up our Big Five Social Skills this week. In case you're wondering what they are, they are following directions, accepting no, accepting consequences, disagreeing appropriately, and staying calm. It's really interesting. These are things that you would be surprised that we have to continue to cover with kids on how not to argue every time you ask them to do something. And it's been a very successful new addition to our plans. Our last day of the trimester is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And so students, when they return on that following Monday, will be starting new classes with new teachers. Their schedules will adjust slightly. So that will be a nice, a new welcome for them. And then we have our middle school reading and math intervention data review on December 9th and 10th. And similar to Act 20, that's where we're screening our kids, and the students that need extra interventions are, are going to those sessions every day. And now we're taking a look at how their progress monitoring is going and making a decisions on, do we proceed, or do we exit, or do we add new kids, that type of thing.
Exciting stuff.
Yeah.
Exciting middle school stuff.
Yes.
That's good. Jess?
All right, at the intermediate school, we continue to work with a CISA 11 representative. So just a reminder, we are in year three of HMH Inter-Reading, which was our selected ELA curriculum. We work with a reading consultant from CISA 11, and so over the last couple of years, she's helped us pace out, do our standards alignment. And this year, what we're really focusing on is writing. Writing is a big component. That goes right along with reading, and so this reading consultant's been here, working with each grade level and small teams, pacing out, developing rubrics, and aligning our writing components to our standards. Act 20, you heard me talk a little bit about that. This week and into next week, our Title I team is running a pilot group, so screening students, using all of the different screeners, really to kind of work out the kinks and help us pace our screening that we anticipate doing in January, and then again in the spring, per the state mandate. I also want to highlight, our reading specialist here in the district has had some professional development days in which she really has taken on the task of some mandated components. So per Act 20, we have to, we have to send out a family history survey. We have to have parent communication. We have to share out results in a timely manner, and we have to have personalized reading plans. So our reading specialist has actually developed drafts of all of those things. So when that work comes in January, we're really prepared to communicate with parents and meet those required components. Again, I feel like we're in a really solid spot. We've had a really great team approach. We've trained our educators, and, and we're ready for January to come. Halloween Carnival, once again, our IPO hosted a fantastic Halloween Carnival that was highly attended. I want to thank them for continuing to do that. All the funds that they make, they then give back to our students. One of the most impactful things they do with the funds that are raised at this Halloween Carnival is they pay for one field trip for our entire building. So they're looking at doing that in January, February. The Eau Claire Children's Theater comes here, and so they're looking to sponsor that event for our entire school. So that is wonderful, and we greatly appreciate their support. The Behavior Solution Series is a three-day series that is being offered by CISA 11. They brought in a PLC Solution Series speaker. His name is John Hannigan. And he works with schools in a team to develop just systems to be proactive in supporting students with behavior. So we actually had a team of nine from across our district that went. So we've completed two out of the three days. The third day will be in the late winter, and it, it was a really great opportunity. Abby attended as well, so it was nice for us in leadership to be able to be together with some, some people on our team and navigate that conversation. November 4th in-service, intermediate school teachers here used a tool that Mr. Benson had shared with us from CISA, and it's called an item analysis tool. So our teachers, that entire afternoon, broke down the forward exam by standards, and what was the success rate, and what are some areas that we need to improve on? And the feedback was fantastic on that. Up next year will be our social studies curriculum adoption for resources. And so just to give you an update on K through 5, I'm leading that. We are currently piloting a program called Teacher-Created Materials. And so each grade level is piloting one lesson from that, that we are considering for social studies purchase. And then finally, WQOW visit, just like last year, our fifth grade news team visited this Eau Claire News Channel. They were able to see the green screen room, meet all the broadcasters. They really, really enjoyed it. So I want to thank them, thank them for inviting us, and thank you, Mrs. Brayton, and Mr. M. for arranging that and being the chaperones on that fun opportunity. Some upcoming things here is we have our PBIS celebration. That's where all intermediate school students go swimming at the center in New Richmond. And then in addition, December 5th is our third grade concert, which is happening at 1:45 at the high school. And we'll be communicating with parents. This is just something new. This taking place during the day was a positive change to support our kids. And so I will be over-communicating just on what those procedures looks like, so parents know going into December 5th what that time looks like. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, I'm here to report out on the elementary school referendum update. We'll call it 95% home. We are on to punch list time, the last remaining items. We are gathering those last remaining items, and we're going to have all those wrapped up here in the next month or two. So that list is developing as we speak, so to speak. Halloween, it was my first Halloween at the elementary school, spending the whole day there. That was a trip. My probably favorite highlight of the day, I was wearing an Afro with a Halloween shirt, which is not what I typically wear. And one little guy said to another little guy, "Who's that guy?" And the other guy, without hesitation, said, "That's my uncle." And I was like, okay, interesting. I'm not sure that their uncle looks like that, but if, if so, great. Halloween was a lot of fun. The staff down there does an excellent job. It is a tough day, but a fun day at the same time, because there's a lot of kids that are a little dysregulated from the amount of candy that they have had as intake. Our next item on the agenda for celebration is Turkey Bingo. And I'm hearing, word on the street is that I'm sort of calling the numbers, Annie's helping me with that. They're going to do a live stream, and I'm hearing something about a costume, so I'm a little nervous about that. But we'll do, I'll do what I'm asked, so to speak.
She's giving an evil grin, so I have a feeling there's some tricks up sleeve there.
I haven't seen the costume yet, but we'll see what happens there. On a serious note, a shout-out to the Student Services Team at the elementary, and the members of that team consist of Abby, our Student Services Director, myself, our counselors Lisa Benson and Josh Graham, school psych. Deanna Johnson, entitled services person at the elementary, one of two, Carrie Shu. The purpose of this team is to develop plans for kids that have been identified that have struggles academically or behaviorally. And it's a pretty impressive bunch, and it's a pretty impressive process to see kids have help for themselves programmed in such a systematic way, in such an effective way. And we're not here to say we're perfect scoring it, because there are kids that are, that have a lot of struggles that we have to tackle. But without the work of that team, I think we would have kids that were, were swimming without any assistance, so to speak. This team does an excellent job of programming help for these kids, and they're grandly successful in many cases as a result, so shout-out to that team. And lastly, we have Holiday Family Fun Night coming up on Thursday, December 5th. So that's the report from the elementary school. And there's a holiday sing-along on the 20th. I think I'll be in the background for that one.
Cool. Okay, Student Services.
Yep, I'm up next. I finally got to meet with all of the special education staff together at our Lesson Service Day, which was super great. We broke up in groups, and we're really trying to look at the transition process when a student supported an IEP moves from one building to the next, making sure that those supports are communicated clearly, and that those supports will just follow them smoothly to the next building. And parents are kind of part of that process, and making sure that they're transitioned smooth also, because it is a transition where parents also moving from one building to the next. So we got to look at that process a little closer. I also got to meet with all the new teachers in the district as part of their essentials programming, covered topics of PBIS, IEPs, and 504s, and what that looks like and how that all supports students. And then finally, a shout-out to Chuck Wellman and the High School Employment Class fundraiser. If you bought enchiladas from them, they were delicious. My family bought them too. So this is a class that does a lot of fundraising, cooking meals, or they'll do some services for pay. And they're raising money to be able to do things out in the community. So enchiladas were excellent. Shout-out to them.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess the only question I have is, it's for Annie, actually. I'm assuming, just because it's Sean, this is the first time you're going to make somebody wear a costume.
No, 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 no. I heard it's just a hat. I'm not a full-on costume. Oh, you're giving me, oh, great.
Whatever you want to believe.
I said hat, you said costume, so whatever you want.
Tomato, tomato, whatever you want to believe.
We'll go with a hat. Whatever you have me do, I guess, is what I'll go with.
All right, then moving on to our clubhouse report with Rachel Kesmorsky.
Our current enrollment is 24 kiddos for six weeks to two years old. Two-to-three-year-old is 18, three-to-four is 29. Childcare total is 71. Before and after school, we have 107. And the grand total is 178. Our childcare waitlist, we have 38 for six weeks to two years, 21 to two to three, 12, three to four, and 10 ages four. 81 total on the waitlist. For summer camp, we had 85 school-aged children enrolled, had lots of fun, including several outings and field trips. One, we went to Eau Claire Children's Museum, to the Glen Park Splash Pad in River Falls, Vonda Rosa, behind the scenes at Sea Life at Mall of America. And then they walked to Dairy Queen and Ellie's Ice Cream. We were going to go to Como Zoo, but that day was excruciating hot, so we decided not to go. And we actually went to Dairy Queen and got ice cream for them and brought them back.
Good call.
And then, this is just some pictures of the field trip, trip fun with stuff. We had some people coming in. We did, we had a lady that came in with some different turtles and bunnies and chickens and that kind of stuff. Then we had a farm. I, well, I can't remember which farm it was, but they came for the four-year-old classroom, and they brought in some animals. And then we had Monty's Reptiles come in also, and they did a show on their alligators, snakes, lizards, and that kind of stuff. And then some more. This is the museum in Eau Claire. Those pictures are the field trip fun, is that. And then this is fun that they had at the elementary school. The, the middle picture with the flowers in the vase, the four-year-old classroom went out and picked the flowers, and then they put them in the card to make their pictures. And then we had a thank you to Jessica for letting us put it out there, but we had a little splash pad for some of the other kids to do. And then we have preparing kids for the Amory 4K. We sent 17 out of the 19 kids from the four-year-old program to the Amory 4K this fall. The other two didn't meet the cutoff for their age, so they are still in the classroom this year. And then there's pictures of our new classrooms. This one happens to be our bunnies classroom, which is two-and-a-half to three-year-olds. This is the four-year-old, or the three, four-year-old classroom, three-and-a-half, four-year-old classroom, the bears. And we are loving our new space. This one is the owls classroom, so that's two-and-a-half to three-year-olds. That is our, some more of the, the one on the left-hand side is the owls. And then the one on the right-hand side is the one-year-old classroom. And obviously, the infant with the cribs, the six weeks to, six months, is the, the three, and then the top one is the, let me see if I can remember. That one is the owls classroom, I believe. And then our clubhouse staffing. We've experienced minimal turnover. We're participating in the DCF Childcare Count Stabilization Program. All staffs, all staff are required to have 15 hours of continuing education every year. Staff are required to take introduction to childcare courses within six months if they have not had any training. Lead teachers are required to take a minimum of two-years early childhood credit courses or equivalent non-credit courses. Young Star requires half of lead teachers to be Level 9 or higher on the registry level. And then all of our wonderful staff. Would you like me to name them?
A lot of good activities going on there.
And then it's just thank you for Amory Community, for your support. Without you, we could not do it. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
I just want to add, while we were sitting here, I got an email that the waitlist jumped from 81 to 88.
How, do you, when you have the waiting list, do you take, do you write down, like, when, how long they've been waiting? So it's like first on the waiting list gets called first, and like, how is that?
Yeah, yep. Through, through our new system, Pro Care, they go on there and they put the date that they entered, their birthday, what classroom they are at the time. And then as we, and then we put it onto a Excel spreadsheet. And then it's first come, first served. So if we have somebody that's been on the waitlist for two years, and now we have an opening in the classroom that they would be in, we would call them first. And then if they say, you know, we found somebody right now, but could we keep them on there? We go to the next one, and then the next one, until somebody says, yes, you know, we want this spot. And then if another opening comes up, we go and call the one that said, well, not at this time. But, and so then we call them, and then we just keep going down the ladder.
And then state license, right? Is that, and is that part of...
Yes, we are.
Some of the requirements of the 15 hours of continuing ed, is that all state licensing requirements?
Yep, yep. It's state licensing and our Young Star program.
Okay.
And you have to be licensed to be under the Young Star. And Young Star is the one that, if you don't belong to Young Star, you can't do like the food or the Wisconsin Shares program. You know, so you can't get the benefits for, you know, people that are struggling or whatever. They can get a certain amount paid for their childcare. And you have to be in the Young Star program to qualify for that.
Okay. So for payment assistance, basically?
Correct. Yep, yep. It's called Wisconsin Shares.
Okay. And that helps with tuition, right?
Yes, yep. And it also helps, we've been, they have the, I said it in one of the slides, it's the, what are the exact words for it? It's where we apply, each month I apply, it's the DFC Childcare Count Stabilization Payment Program. Each month I apply for scholarships to help out with increasing funds for workforce and childcare, helping better the childcare with stuff.
In the 15 hours of continuing education, who pays for that?
The staff themselves do.
Okay.
Yep. We, we pay, so like if somebody comes in and they don't have... Yep, we, we pay, so like if somebody comes in and they don't have any of the qualifications, we pay for the classes to get those qualifications than anything beyond that. And right now, especially with how childcares are going, there are so many free courses out there that you can take through the registry or, you know, other places that count for the 15 hours. And they've really switched to, because before you had to have so many hours of in person. And you could only do like a couple hours a year for internet or self reading. And now, just as long as you have your 15 hours in, in a credible organization, it's good.
And that, when you say accredited, they have to be accredited with the state to qualify for that?
Yeah, yep, yep. It has to be, like if you do any research, it has to be the not, .net, .orgs, that kind of stuff to get the credit for reading the article.
Okay, and that's turned over to the state and they approve or do you do that?
If, we have to do a continuing education sheet. And if they look at it, if the licenser were to come in and say, I want to see your continuing ed sheet, we have to show them that. And then if we say we read an article for a half an hour, we have to have proof of that article. So I always tell staff, you know, if you've did it, make sure you print it and put it with that. So then there's proof and then he can look and see that it's, you know, it's through a college or it's .net, .org or something like that. So it's a credible.
Serves. Okay. Any other questions for Rachel? How do you feel things are going?
Pretty good, actually. We're, we've got, you know, a few more new hires. So we're able to bump up some in the classrooms and, you know, get stuff. Just within the last two weeks, we've gotten, what was it? It's either seven or 11 new kids.
Okay.
And it's of all ages. So yeah, we're getting there.
Good. All right, thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay, then moving into the informational items. And we'll have our referendum building and grounds update with our, first with our building and grounds committee. So Steve, I'll turn it over to you and Joe first.
You go first. So we walked with Sean and George last week. We did some tours of the sports complex, baseball field. We did some walking around the high school and the elementary school. And yeah, there's so much of that stuff that we talked about in the past, just behind the scenes stuff that is fascinating. It's amazing to see how much they were able to cram into some of those spaces and how some of the spaces in the high school changed. And now you're down to just some of the cosmetic stuff for the most part. So it's, it's exciting to see. And I know that it's wrapping up and coming to an end and it's all, all good things, I think, so.
Yeah, George said we were down to about, well, we have 95% completed. So again, a lot of those finishes. And I just, I, I just wanted to mention, I talked to Steve about it earlier, is I, we had the opportunity to walk out onto the baseball field. And, you know, I've kind of given some grief about our sports complex and just about, you know, me with money and how much we've been spending, you know, 50 plus million dollars over everything. And I went on that in that baseball field. And I'll, I'll be really honest, I hope our kids and our parents and our taxpayers really are grateful and for everything that's out there. It kind of gave me chills, you know, I wish I had that opportunity to play ball. When we were going to school, you know, baseball was a summer sport. And, you know, I had to work three jobs since I was driving. So I tell you, walking out on that field was pretty, it was kind of tingly. So I don't know, I really enjoyed it. And I hope, again, I just hope these kids, and again, not to say that there's any difference, right? Because you can, you know, whether you're working or you're playing ball or sports or whatever, you can still, you know, I was, I just wrote down, you can still get the attributes of humility, hard work, dedication, learn resiliency and failure, you know, from both sides of that. But I hope, you know, through all these efforts and this hard work here on this end, that they realize what they have.
And you know, we didn't, we didn't walk over to the softball field, but I, I stopped and looked at what's going on there. And quite a change. So it's going to be exciting to see not only baseball under the lights, but softball under the lights. And then, and, and I don't remember if we talked about it in past meetings, but the, the new baseball field with the turf can also be modified to play softball. So you've got, you have a chance there for multiple games and tournaments. And, and I think the biggest challenge we're going to face going forward is just finding a place to park everybody when you have so much going on.
And the Jorgensen bench is in a Jorgensen Memorial Fields that went in last week. Connie was super excited and shot out a picture. So if you have a chance, go and stop and look, it's fantastic.
Now, the only catch there with that, with softball and baseball of JV is that it'll probably be another year before we can play.
Well, it's gonna, it's not going to be playable in the spring based on having the grass, grass be playable. And that's true of, of JV baseball as well. But summer is a potential, maybe. We'll just have to wait and see what kind of winter we have.
But varsity field is.
Varsity field is turf and that can be retrod for baseball. We have all the accommodations to be able to do that. So that's what we'll, we'll do. We also have arrangements with other ball fields to be able to play. Jeff's already secured that.
Arrangements with them.
Arrangements for softball.
To go elsewhere.
To play in other spots.
But we're going to see that same thing with people wanting to come to use our field as well.
Yes, because most fields, if we have a, a bad winter, are not going to be playable either. And I would imagine they're going to want to use the field that is and ours will be. And we'll have to broker an arrangement for them to be able to come over here and do that.
So anyway, it was a lot of good stuff.
Cool.
The finances of it?
Yeah, as we draw a little bit closer, specifically on the backside of the page, on the second page there, Kraus Anderson starts, you'll start to notice that some of the more round even numbers start to become a little bit more finalized. And that's as we continue to close out some of these projects. Some of them are still outstanding. But we did have our final budget meeting. That was probably just after our last board meeting. And we are, as of today, we're $527,000 after our Kraus Anderson credit back to us under budget. So we are still right where we need to be. And that includes a lot of the, like Sean was just saying, a lot of the equipment to kind of make the varsity baseball field work for softball and some of those safety things. So everything is right where it needs to be. We're, we're sitting pretty as far as everything is, is going.
I give a question. So I know that in the big windstorm we had, we had a scoreboard that got, one scoreboard got damaged?
We did, two.
Two got damaged?
Two got damaged, yeah.
And there's an insurance claim on that.
Correct.
Is there a deductible on that?
Yeah, there was a thousand dollar deductible on that. And that'll be one of those few things that we've been kind of holding on to to decide if there's money left over in referendum or not. Is that something that we, we go towards that or towards there? And we're also still subrogating that with Daktronics, the scoreboard company, because they were to have been installed weeks prior and they weren't, they were still sitting on the ground. So we're kind of going back and forth with them on that one still, just to try and get them to cover that difference.
And that was my question is can that deductible be paid with referendum funds?
It, it could be, yes. It, it, we were lucky enough, because it was a windstorm, if you guys remember our insurance increases last year for wind and hail. Since they were out in the open, there was actually two possibilities. One was to be covered under our builder's risk policy, which is inevitably what happened. So it was either going to be a $10,000 deductible or a $1,000 deductible. And since it is part of the scope of work, even though it is different and not paid through referendum, it still fell underneath there. So we were lucky enough to not have to do that. So, but it was, that windstorm did about $28,000 total worth of damage to those two scoreboards. And it will be spring before we get them installed now, unfortunately, because they still haven't arrived.
Any other questions regarding the financial impact?
What happens with, if you've got the money leftovers, it just go towards the debt?
Yeah, so there's, there'll, there'll be decisions that need to get made. I don't know if it'll end up being, that won't happen until the entire project is 100% closed out in all of the ancillary bills and everything that kind of trickle in after the project are completed. So I'm not sure if these will be 24, 25 decisions or 25, 26 decisions. But it'll come down to really two possibilities. And one is defeating debt and the other would be, is there, I mean, other projects that that money could fit into that scope? But that's kind of what it looks like. That number will probably shrink as well as time goes on.
Any more conversation on the referendum update?
Kraus Anderson and LHB will be here next month for a closeout with all of you.
And they just had, I think they were scheduled for this month, right?
They were. We, we just couldn't make it work in regards to their schedules.
Okay, moving along then to the first reading of board policy on the updates of ELA, our English language learners and then adult education.
Okay, the first one, 342.6, it's simply a word change. The state of Wisconsin no longer calls it English language learners, as they call it English learners. So it's EL as opposed to ELL. And simply the changes there are all about the second L. And then the date changed to December, because you'll see it again next month. So that's all this one is, it's just an updated language. The next is policy 344, adult education. The way that this is worded, it's simply not fitting for what we actually do. We have a whole different facilities use policy. This is for adult education, but we don't really have adult education. We have community education, so it looks very different in a lot of ways. So I think we need to revisit this policy altogether, because this one is a little old mowed. And those are the two first readings. And you can revisit these again next month. I'll work with Tracy on the adult education policy and come back with something that's more fitting to what we already are presently doing. And 830 is a good start, because that's a policy that we've been deferring to for quite some time, the facilities use policy. Again, first reading, so you don't need to do anything with it other than hear it, so to speak.
Any discussion on either of these policies, questions, language changes? Obviously, these are pretty straightforward, so. Okay. Then we'll move along to our action items. And we are looking at the second reading of board policy updates. And I'll turn that over to Dr. Durfler for the second reading.
Nothing's been changed on policy 222. This looks just like you saw it last month. I'm not sure if you wanted to do these one at a time or all together. I'm not sure how you want to do that. There is one that has a change to it and that's 260. So how do you want to proceed on this?
I think I'll just ask for discussion on each of these policies. And then we can decide from there, depending on what the discussion looks like.
All right.
Is there discussion regarding policy 222 administrator contracts?
222, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Can you tell me where this was, where this actual verbiage came from and why this is best practices?
Well, this was written in 2002, so I can't speak to the language that's in the black. I can only speak to the language in the.
To the current language in red.
Well, actually, it was written first in 1993 and then 2002. This reflects the contractual language in state statute in regards to administrative contracts. If you're going to do an administrative contract that's two-year rolling in nature, the state statute states that you have to have this done by January 31st. And hence, the date of February 1st goes with that. And the language that's in that last sentence, failure to notify that sentence, that also comes from state statute. This is verbiage that's provided to, been provided to the district by Weld Riley in previous conversations.
Are other school districts the same policy?
I can't speak to what other districts have for a policy such as this. I can only speak to ours.
But they're still, they're all following state statute. So it can't be too, too different, too vastly determined, I think.
Yeah, I hope so. How many other, how many other contracts have you seen?
How many other contracts, administrative contracts? I've seen the ones that are in district. There is a, a group of superintendents, which is basically everyone in the middle border conference. There is a, a portal that they drop years of experience, age, salary, other addendums, other items in contracts like health insurance, TSA's, all of that. And, and there's a, a place where contracts are dropped in. I have not viewed in great length what other districts do. I simply rely on what Weld Riley has told us is in following of state statute and creation of contracts. And the contracts that the administrative team have, have all been vetted through Weld Riley. That occurred about a year and a half ago.
And it's in state law that, again, the red, failure to notify the administrator of the intent to non-renew shall automatically result in a one-year extension of the existing contract?
That's the language that's been given to me by Steve Weld. Could I quote the state statute for you? No, I could not.
And that's because of the two-year rolling contract?
Correct. If you wanted to exclude that language and do a one-year contract, you'd simply exclude that, that language in order to do that. Then the administrative team would be on just that, a one-year contract from July 1 through June 30. There's only one school in CISA that I'm aware of that does that. And that's, from what I understand, been difficult for them to retain people.
I guess the, the biggest thing, Dr. Durfler, that I'm looking for is that we have a fair and equitable contract across every, you know, again, I don't know if every school district throughout, you know, whether it's Northwest Wisconsin or the state, is using the same verbiage or the same policy. But I just, I'm guessing I just want to use the, the one that's used the most, so that it's fair to you. It's fair to our taxpayers. Because obviously, if we make the mistake, we're paying you for a year.
Well, this isn't a contract, this isn't about my contract, this is about all administrative contracts.
Okay, for, for all these people then?
Yeah, yes.
Well, then we, then we pay for all these people for a year if we make a mistake.
Well, you theoretically could.
Yeah.
But this language here is again, from our attorney. This language here reflects what most districts do and that most districts offer two-year rolling contracts for administrators. That I can say.
Tom, you were a principal elsewhere, right? I'm sorry, I'm starting to date, because I, I've known you for a long time, but only in this capacity, but.
I, I was administrator down in Ellsworth prior to here. The contract was almost identical when I came up here. I work with, well, we all have different association groups that we meet with. So we go to OSAO conferences, which is the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators. We also meet with, periodically with the other administrators in our conference. And we pick a different theme and one of them is to compare contracts. They're almost all identical.
And Abby, you, you just recently came to us from another school district in the similar role. So how does this look, how does your contract here look versus somewhere else? And I'm not asking for particulars.
Yeah, very similar. Yeah, very, very similar. And this language was very much in my contract and agreement.
Josh and Jess, I don't mean to leave you out, but you're very new and only here. So I just, I wanted to see what other, what other experience there was from other districts and what that looked like. And that's been, Tom, how long have you been here now?
This is my 26th year in this role.
It's been a while.
So this isn't like stunningly new language then?
No.
Since this looked very familiar back from where you were, came from before.
Right, 97 when I started over there.
If you want me to bring what a one-year contract language looks like, I'd be happy to bring that. I simply don't have it at my fingertips, but I can get that for you if that's what you'd like to see.
I don't think we'd have interest in a one-year contract. We, we could be playing musical chairs with administrative team members. I don't know why we'd want to do that.
No, Dale, my, my point is, is that I just wanted to see different contracts from different districts. I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're giving the guy a fair and equitable contract in our policy. It's not, given our team, sorry, the guy.
I can bring, I can bring samples from other districts if you want me to. That's, that's easy enough to come by. That's, that's easy enough to come by. I might have to be creative in regards to obscuring the identity of which district it is because I'm not sure they want that to be.
It should be all open record, right?
Well, I would have to do open records requests to secure those or get permission. I simply want to be respectful of them in that you would be discussing the contract here in open session. I want them to be aware that that's what you're doing.
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, I'm just asking you to go on their website, go under their policy and then just go under their administrative contract policy and then print it.
Probably not going to have their contracts in policy off of district website. They might, but they probably wouldn't.
I'm not, no, I'm not talking, I'm talking about a con, an administrator contracts policy just like this one.
That they would probably have, if they have their policies on their website. That certainly I can.
That's what I want to see is whatever that they have, I just want to make ours similar to what everyone else has, so it's fair and equitable.
If they have policies such as this, I will be happy to bring some from neighboring schools, middle border, CISA 11 schools. I'd be happy to do that.
I would appreciate that. It doesn't, obviously, we're on part of just one guy in a board. Obviously, doesn't mean it has to occur.
In light of that, in light of the questions, what would you want to do with this particular policy? Because if you want more information, then I don't think that we should move ahead with approving this policy then tonight in the second reading. Would you like to table this policy?
Well, I would motion that we, I would motion that we table this policy, specifically the administrator contacts, contracts policy.
Yes, I'm only asking regards to this policy. So I'm, I'm asking to take the action kind of one policy at a time based on discussion. And so based on this discussion, I feel if we're asking for more information, then we're not in a position to take action other than to table it.
If you're allowing me to make that motion, I'll make it.
Of course I am. You can make any motion you want to. Well, in regards to open meeting, go ahead, yes, if you would like to, if you'd like to make a motion to table this.
I'll make a motion to table administrator contracts.
Policy number 222?
Policy number 222.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded to table policy 222 administrator contracts pending. More information needed to make a decision on this. Is there any further discussion on tabling policy number 222 administrator contracts? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of tabling policy 222 administrator contracts, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of those opposed to tabling policy 222, signify by saying no. Motion passes. Policy 222 is tabled until the next meeting pending further information requested. Moving on to policy number 230, administrative team.
230 hasn't changed, it's simply switched out the word pupil for student and have a new date. We simply refer to our services director as a student services director rather than a pupil services director. 260, I had to re-listen to the tape, if you will, to come up with what your request of me was and that is.
Can I, can I just stop you there for a second? Sorry, you're getting ahead of me. Is there any further discussion, is there any discussion regarding policy 230, the administrative team?
I would move to accept the policy 230 on the second reading for the administrative team.
I'll second it.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded to approve policy 230 administrative team as written. Is there any further discussion on policy 230? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving policy 230 administrative team as written, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Policy 230 administrative team is approved as presented. Sorry, Sean, go ahead to 260.
I'm sorry, I'm the one that was racing ahead here. So the section that is authored in blue is new and it reads, "The Board of Education shall make the appointment of an interim district administrator designee in July of each school year. The designee must be a member of the school district of Amory District Team." That's the only addition that I made. You were looking for some logistical clarifications rather than a carte blanche. Well, there'll be somebody if in fact the district administrator can't perform their duties and will be the ones that will make the decision as to who it is. So this tells you from which group of people it would be and what time of year you would do it. And if there are other additions or omissions that you want me to make, I'd be happy to do that. Again, this policy's been around for a very long time and hasn't been touched in a very long time.
Yeah, and we've had this happen and I think it's important that we have some language that solidifies up who's responsible for that and when that needs to happen, so. Is there any discussion on policy 260, temporary administrative arrangements?
My only question is on that last sentence in blue. The designee must be a member of the school district of Amory District Team. I'm assuming we mean administrative team.
Well, district team is these individuals here, myself, and then you're talking director of transportation, John, Becky, Tracy. There is 15 as opposed to six.
Six, yes.
Got it, yes.
Thank you.
And when the board would make that decision in July, there'd be a current list given to the, to the board at that time of what that administrative, what that Amory district team looks like.
Right, got it, thank you.
Sure. Any further discussion? Do we have a motion to accept policy 260, temporary admin arrangements?
I'll make a motion when we approve policy 260.
Dale, is there a second, Steve? Is there any further discussion regarding policy 260, temporary administrative arrangements? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of approving policy 260, temporary administrative arrangements, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of those opposed? Motion passed. Policy 260 is accepted.
The last policy is 342 point, the last policy that you're visiting tonight is 342.5 and that is the title policy formerly known as the No Child Left Behind Title Program Policy. And No Child Left Behind simply doesn't exist anymore in verbiage. And I will happily defer all questions on said policy to Jessica Deambroglia.
Thank you.
It hasn't changed since last month.
So we just reviewed DPI guidance on the development of a Title I Parent and Family Engagement Policy, making sure that we've checked all the required components that they've asked of us. That's where this was drafted out of.
And are there any more questions regarding this? I know maybe last month it was, we were missing a board member and then I think we got a little bit of explanation. This is all, it's pretty straightforward, but if you have questions in regards to how title works versus the No Child Left Behind, then this would be the time to ask those questions at this point.
No Child Left Behind was phased out in 2015 and was replaced with the Every Student Succeeds Act.
I would make a motion we accept the changes as presented for 342.5.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept policy 342.5, Title I Parent and Family Engagement Policy as revised. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving policy 342.5, Title I Parent and Family Engagement Policy as revised, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. 342.5, Title I Parent and Family Engagement Policy is accepted as revised and presented. And now, moving along to transportation of homeschooled students with board member Jill Veer-Kant. Joe?
Do I have to get a motion to talk about this even?
No, we're on friendly parliamentary procedure here, so same as all the rest of it.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, first of all, start this off with thanking you for allowing me to even speak about this. I, I wanted to tell you the why. Why did I want our transportation to all children in our school district? Is to truly complete the mission of the district and it's to foster academic excellence, lifelong learning and citizenship. Let this show, let's show this to all children, full-time, part-time, enrolled, homeschooled and whatever else we can think of. And for some reason, the way I wrote this was a bunch of notes. So I said that when the tuba went silent, our family, and this is the big thing around here, is our family decided to remove our kids from school because of several different reasons, mostly due to faith-based, along with some other concerns we had. We are now homeschooling. We wish to partner with our schools and we wish to provide our kids with the best education we thought was possible. When our, when my child was denied to be able to ride the bus home from band, which was the last class of the day, we unfortunately had to tell our daughter we cannot continue band. Hence, the last school lost its tuba player, or the middle school lost its tuba player. This was upsetting to me because my daughter really enjoyed playing tuba. I spoke with the administrator about this and asked for permission if we could get simply a ride home with the bus to our house. That didn't go well. The conversation was more about funding and a comment came up that I still remember that stated, and this is more about homeschooling, that if we don't invest in the district, why would our district invest in our kids? So I walked out and I told Char I'd like this to be on the meeting. I came to school in Amory in fourth grade to graduation. I became a homeowner in the district in 2006. I've served this country and I still serve this community and now in Barron. I've been serving since I've been 18. Investing occurs in many different ways, not just in funding. And just like why I would never insult the administrator for not investing by living outside the district because he invests more in time and efforts than many that live within our district. You do. There are other reasons why I want this board to consider to transportation of kids who are homeschooled. Again, we have the opportunity to have our kids go to, go to school. And I hope our kids do. Children are already, who are homeschooled, are already riding the bus for sports. I believe, and John, maybe you can help me with this, that we receive funding for every child who gets on the bus. No? Tell me more about that, please.
So the state of Wisconsin is funded on a per pupil count, including our general transportation aid. General transportation aid is butts in seats or based off of our third Friday pupil count.
Is it based off of that?
Correct.
That's what I was wondering. No one could give me the answer of. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay, so the issue we had in regards to funding was the school district, when my kids left, lost it, we knew, we thought at that time it was $8,400 per kid. So the school district lost just over, you know, $16,000. So that's where we have problems. The thing is, again, I've been a resident in Amory since 2006 and paying property taxes since then. And again, I've been investing in the school district and I think I'm doing it right now with my butt in the seat.
The other thing too, I want to tell you is that it's declining enrollment I wanted to bring up. Don't just give up on your students or parents. Try to earn them back. Over the past four years, this environment of politics and, and hatred and absolutely difficult environments to live in has affected all of us. I hope we can look at the benefits of getting these kids back to the school. Allow these kids to participate in these great opportunities. The taxpayers, to include homeschooled parents, have obviously assisted in investing well over $50 million in the past two years. Let's think bigger picture about citizenship, not just for the full-time enrolled students. On top of this, I see the bus drive, passer driveway every day. So what I'm asking simply for is not a big, a big deal. It's simply to ask if any child has a class at our school district for the first class, that they can ride the bus to school and attend school for their first class. If it's the last class of the day, like my daughter's band class was, we can have someone bring her to school and allow her to ride the bus home. It's, it would be extremely helpful in a partnership to us. That's what I'm asking from this board. Would you like to have some thoughtful debate?
I, I, I don't like setting the precedent because I don't know what the next step is. This is the first, first stepping stone on, with a pretty drastic change for something you're not getting funding for and I don't know what it leads to. So, you know, you ride the bus to school, but then somebody says, well, I can't pick up my kids. What happens to that kid? Do they stay at school? Do they walk home? Do they? Are they going to ask next for a bus ride home? Those are the things that I, I don't have the answers to.
No.
So I appreciate what you're, what you're saying. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I just don't, I don't know without more thought, more discussion, what does, what does setting that precedent lead to?
What does happen if, if they have their first class and then they can't pick them up for whatever reason? What, how, like what would happen?
Well, I, I guess I sure hope parents are, are preparing and planning and, you know, obviously, I think in any situation, I mean, these are kids. We're going to work with them. If their parent's involved in an accident and they can't pick up their kid, we'll figure it out. We'll help them.
So can I play devil's advocate?
Play it.
Well, I don't know that it's devil's advocate. I think it's just discussion of where we go.
But using that train of thought, if that's the case, why can't you have friends of yours pick up your kid after school?
Yeah, I agree.
So I, the, the other stepping stones that I, that I fear is if we do it beginning and end, then somebody says, well, I want a class in the middle of the day. You already do it then, why aren't you going to do it for us?
School buses aren't transporting kids and it's before and after school.
I understand that.
We do have vans running though in the middle of the day.
That's not what I'm asking for.
No, but it's all stepping stones to that. I'm not opposed to the conversation by any stretch of the imagination.
It's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking simply for this super small task that, again, I, I have a hard time seeing the financial hardship. Again, we're.
But your case might be different if, if the bus goes right by your place. What if your bus doesn't go past that place? Somebody in a different location where the bus has to make a special.
Well, then I think, well, then I think we, again, we need to think bigger picture about these kids are going to be our, our community members in the future, our citizenship. Again, it's like, think about the miss, mission of this organization. Like, right? I, I want good kids to grow up and be good adults. I don't care if you're full-time here, you're part-time here, if you're homeschooled. That's what I want.
Yeah, I think you're, I'm, I think what the, the broader picture here, if I'm listening to Steve and listening to Dale and I'm thinking of my own thoughts is to consider what your, what the proposal is, not necessarily what you're asking for, but what a proposal is and how does that transfer to policy? Because there'll have to be policy, there'll have to be logistics of what happens when you can't pick up your student either before or after. What ha, or get them here prior to or pick them up after. What does that look like in regards to filling out paperwork for safety issues? Kind of, I think we, do we do that for sports now? If kids ride the bus for sporting activities, what does that look like? Do people have to fill out paperwork as far as like allergies and contact information and medical?
If you're riding the bus as a traditionally enrolled student here in Amory, none of that occurs.
I'm just asking for homeschooled students who are provided transportation for athletics.
That looks, that's a co-op. That's how the, the law treats it. That's how insurance treats it. Like, for instance, our co-op for hockey with, I believe it's Clear Lake and Clayton, is that accurate, Josh? That, those students aren't asked to do anything different than what the students here in the school district of Amory are asked to do. They have to provide extra documentation. They're simply treated as Amory kids in that they're a co-op with Amory in that athletic endeavor.
So what if we have homeschooled students who participate in just an athletic event? And I, I know we have one sitting in the room.
They, they, they go to the event on the bus if the bus is going to Baldwin.
Do they fill out paperwork in order to ride the bus?
They don't have to fill out paperwork. They simply need to fill out the 1206 to be declared as a homeschooled student via WIAA. They don't have to fill out paperwork, they simply need to fill out the twelve oh six to be declared as a homeschooled student via WIAA.
So, and so we have no, currently, we have no paperwork on these students if they have peanut allergies, if they're B allergic, if they're anything like that as far as medical contact information? Because typically, we have that all on file for our students who are. I'm sorry.
So.
I, I'm sorry, I thought I had the, I thought I had the floor there for a second.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I was just gonna try to answer a question on the, on the the work, is that your question?
Well, I'm asking as far as, because if you're enrolled as a student here in the district, we have that kind of paperwork that parents fill out every year at the beginning of the year for emergency contact and medical things and all of that.
So for, for sports, they have to register the same as any athlete and there's emergency con? I think that's what you're talking about, the emergency contact information is right there and.
Do our, our homeschooled students need to fill that up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All athletes, homeschool or traditional, all of them?
That in the, in the required physical work in case there's health concerns.
Okay.
And so it does list, I, there's a spot to put down, like, if there's medical conditions.
Cause I'm just thinking, if, if this was something that the board is going to consider exploring, what does that look like in our parents willing to fill out that kind of information to be transported by the district? And would we require that to be transported by the district for just classes? I, I think it would be prudent to ask for that.
I think that's what would be written into policy if you were gonna do such a thing. But to Josh's point, the, the emergency contact, the physical covers most information that one would need.
So I'm asking for, like, for you to be more specific, go, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom, before I move along.
I mean, I have, currently, I have a, a homeschool, a couple homeschool students that come. One of them's in the middle of the day, so they're dropped off and picked up for their activity. And it just happens that their activity is not at the beginning or the end. I've, I've never had an issue with that student ever not showing up or late for pickup. But if there was a situation like that, obviously, we would find a place for them to sit and give them an opportunity. And if it was something that was happening repetitively over and over and over again, well, then we could have conversations with that parent about the concerns that we're having and the staffing that it's taking to, to do so. But I don't know if that answers the question on that, you know, as far as how that works, but.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I'm asking for, so you, you wanted us to kind of consider this. I know you asked for like, to make a motion to discuss this, we don't need to do that to discuss this. I think what your motion would be is to ask the district to either approve or to approve transportation of homeschooled kids if they have a class at the beginning of the day and if, to here and if they have a class at the end of the day home, is that what you're asking for? Because I don't, without having the logistics explored with that, I'm not sure that we are prepared to move along with that motion, but that's totally up to you.
Well, I didn't come here with a, with the policy prepared, but I am asking for that.
So then with the motion that you're asking the board to do is to consider transportation in just those instances, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
What happens after you make that motion?
Well, then the, if the board, then we would take a vote if the board is willing to discuss what that policy would look like, to draft a policy, what that looks like, and then eventually would either move along or approve or not approve policy. I think, or if you just, if you just wanna bare bone it right now and say, we're not, we are interested in this or we're not interested in this and we're not going to do something either way, or we are going to do something either way, that's the, I think that would be.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm currently not interested in this, but I am interested in the discussion.
Okay.
Because I, I, I think that there's, there's stuff outside of my personal thoughts and beliefs that I need to learn. And I think that we need to talk the legal component, we need to meet with the administrators to talk and the, the bus garage people to discuss it, to understand the full ramifications. We need to think outside the box of what could happen or what, you know, like I talk about stepping stones, what's the next step that people will be asking for if you give them this? And I, and I don't wanna make it sound like, well, you just know that you give somebody an inch, it'll take a mile eventually. It's all stepping stones to something bigger. And at some point, you have to say, no, we, we can't go any further than this. So the question is, is now the point you say no? Or is there a place down the road that you would say no? And I think that we just need to have a bigger conversation about that.
I agree, I think there's more people and more stakeholders that need to sit in this conversation than just the board at this point. I think that we need to really drill down into what is being asked. And, and to Joe's point, I know he's using his own, his own children here as a, an example, but clearly, there's more children in the district that this affects and more families that this affects. And I think that they, that we need to have more of a discussion based on that. And even as far as if we're, you know, if we're looking at policies from other districts, do other districts do this?
I, I don't know of any, but I will certainly try and find out.
So would there be a motion then that the board approve further investigation into possible transportation of homeschooled students? Is, is that what you're asking for, Joe?
Do we even have to make that motion?
We don't have to make that motion, I would just expect that we do it.
Do, do the research.
Yeah, let's do the research, let's put the people together and task this out. And then, a- again, I think if, if at that point, we can, appease isn't the correct word, but if we can come up with the benefits that this works for our district, we can put it to, you know, bring it to the public, tell everyone what we have, and we can bring it back to here, here again for a vote.
I'm not gonna speak for the board as a whole, so I guess I'll just ask the board members to weigh in and see what their feelings are, cause if the, if, if the majority doesn't feel it's worth exploring, then I don't think that it's, that we would move forward, so go ahead, Dale.
Well, from what I know right now, I, I probably would not necessarily support this. I'm not opposed to exploring it. But I, I think there'd be some big concerns if we start doing this. We could have buses going off, you know, extending their routes based on potentially picking up a homeschooled child. They come to school, what happens if nobody picks them up and they're, they get hurt at school? You know, we're throwing out a lot of what ifs here, but the reality is, what if something happens? And so, I don't know, I just, I have some, some reservations about it, but.
So you're open to exploring it at least?
I'd be open to exploring it and listening to what we find, but that's all I can say right now, yeah.
Yes, I would be in favor of exploring it, I'm kind of with Dale and Steve on that. I'm concerned about Pandora's Box. I'm concerned that, so we say that they're coming for this and then what happens if they don't? And I, I just think that if I were opting to homeschool my child and I wanted them to take band at the end of the day or whatever's at the beginning of the day and the class is tend to be, I haven't had a student in middle school in a long time. They used to be seventy-five minutes long, I don't, if you're still at that. And then I think we also have to consider, we're not just talking about the middle school, we're talking about all school. And it's one thing for a middle school kid to be picked up late, I think they can handle being set in the cafeteria or wherever you'd set them and they'd be fine. I, I really don't like to think about an elementary child or an intermediate school child where a parent, they rode the bus to school and then for some odd reason, the parent is late, for whatever reason. And then, I don't know, they're, those kids are just different and they need a little more attention. And I don't think that our administrative staff, our librarian, librarian, whoever would be put in charge of that child, I don't think that's a fair task for them. And, you know, frankly, if I were homeschooling my child, I, I would think that I would know it was my responsibility that I have to get them there and back. I think it's a very cool opportunity that our schools open up class options to homeschooled students. I didn't even know that, that, I mean, in the past, that probably was not always the case with homeschooling. I know my nieces were homeschooled and that was definitely not the case in their school district. And so I think that it's a blessing that we, we're offering that. I, I am concerned about the transportation for, for a variety of reasons. Plus, if all of a sudden twenty homeschool kids were all on the same bus route and that one bus driver has twenty more students riding in the evening or in the morning, whichever case it would be, that would be a concern also.
But we don't, we don't know necessarily who is homeschooled and where they live and all of those things, right? I mean, most of the time, they don't report that kind of information to the district simply because they don't want to, correct?
Erin Osro can track all students, I'm not sure how, how much she can drill down. She can give you the number of homeschooled students in a district, so I'm assuming she knows their identity.
She told, she told me it was like a hundred and forty-nine.
There's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twelve students in district as of a couple weeks ago that are homeschooled. I believe that she can identify who they are because they have to declare when they're a homeschooled person that they are a homeschooled person, so I'm assuming that's what she's referencing.
But there's only a handful of them that are actually taking classes.
I don't know how many are taking classes, but some are, I do know that.
It wasn't, it wasn't many, I don't remember if it was a dozen or a handful.
I don't know right offhand, to be honest with you.
Okay, so it seems like the board would be interested in exploring the proposal that Joe has brought forth. I, I think there's some definite requirements that we need to look at when we move forward with this regarding liability, pickup drop-off liability, other schools if they do this, transportation of where those kids live, the impact of bus routes with mileage, in regards to mileage and how long our bus routes would be or not be. Interest from other homeschool parents, if there's been any interest? And then, obviously, then if we're gonna move forward with that, specific, specifics in regards to what forms or information needs to be provided to the district in order to participate in that transportation? Like, those are, is that what I'm hearing, that this board has?
I have some of that information already, but not all of it.
Okay.
So the only question I have, I'm, I'm assuming Sean, you would head this up, is that right?
That's your choice, not, I'm not gonna.
How do we make it, how, how does it look? What do we do to, to accomplish?
The laundry list of questions or items that Shar brought up, I've assembled some of that information, so I do have a start on some of it.
I think normally, we differ to Sean, he is the district administrator for this, that's, that's how that process works. I would differ to him with the information that I have. Joe also brought this forward and responsibility as a board member to bring this forward is to look a little bit more clearly of like, how you wanna focus that in and then also do a little bit of legwork of other schools that, that do this or if you've heard of other things or anything else that you wanna see included and to have a kind of a more narrow focus of, of what we wanna look at accomplishing.
Yeah, well, and, and.
So I, I would move forward, if we're gonna move this forward on the agenda, I would, I would put this on the agenda as being co-presented by Joe and Sean at the same time.
Where I'm going with this is, this is a, this is a big topic. And I'm not anticipating that we'll have traction by December's board meeting. Now, there could be, I could be wrong, but I think that it's, there's probably multiple phases to this. And the first phase is, what information do we have to gather before we decide whether we even want to go further?
Well, I have.
Then you dig in after that.
Sorry, I have DPI guidance, I have an answer from Lead Home, Lead Home Insurance, they are our liability insurance. I don't, when you say mileage, I could, I couldn't possibly answer that cause you need to know who in order to know where, in order to know mileage, obviously, we don't know that answer. I can find out from CISA eleven via survey, they do surveys all the time, who does and who does not. We don't have survey abilities beyond CISA eleven, but that's thirty-nine, thirty-eight of our neighbors, us being the thirty-ninth, that I can get access to. I can find out if there are other districts with policies in regards to that. I'd have to contact the ones that say, yes, we do this, but I don't know if, if anyone does and if so, if they'd be willing to share their policy or if it's available on their website. I could do some of the legwork, but I'm, I'm not sure what that will lead to.
We could have a ten thousand foot view
Good.
in, in December.
Sure.
And I don't wanna spend a pile of time on it and, and force the issue. I wanna make sure if we're gonna do something, that we do it right. But I don't, I wanna make sure that we've got that ten thousand foot view before we decide we're digging in, right?
I would like our administrative team to weigh in on that while you are in your administrative team meetings. Obviously, this is something new that was brought to you here. You have to leave it open, just, you can just crack it.
Be a crack.
Yeah, just to buffer a little bit of the noise. Obviously, this was fairly new to you guys, something that we've kind of been privy to that this was, you know, kind of coming along. But to discuss it in your administrative team meetings, I think would be a more appropriate place for y'all to do that. And what, what, you know, for you guys to mull over if you have concerns or thoughts or good things that would come of it or how it would benefit kids in your building. And I know that this administrative team has always done what's in the best interest of kids and your school building and your each individual, as Gwen said, I mean, your each individual building, I, I think the concerns and the benefits are, are different for each building, so.
Hey, Shar. Obviously, some time and thought and some research, I already went to the behind the scenes of this. Already notifying our insurance, Sean, I'm sure you got some question, I'm sure you have some answers.
I do.
Why don't we meet behind, why don't you meet with me? Why don't I take this off of the agenda, why don't I, this, this died, first of all. And, and again, I think Steve has it right, I think there's way too many questions right now. I think there's, we don't even know what we're getting involved in. I thought it would be an awesome concept to start with. And again, not to say that I didn't try for some great student enrollment. Again, I just like to think that maybe someday, you know, again, this is the first year we ever tried homeschool in, in, in my life and my kid's life, whatnot. If it didn't go well, wouldn't, I, I sure would like to hope that we were welcomed back into this school district. And I sure would like to think that even when we're homeschool right now, we, we feel welcomed and partnered with this school in all the, in everything. My folks and my wife and I and our kids have, you know, tried to be good community members here. But obviously, this, this action item died.
I don't think it died at all, I think this board is willing to check it out, but this board isn't about just, like, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I know that this is gonna sound insulting and I don't mean it to be that way, but a willy-nilly kind of action, cause this, this does result in policy and what we have to do then in that. We can't just say like, okay, this is what we're gonna do and then not have anything to support that moving forward.
Yeah, this is culture, this is culture change and stuff here. So would you allow me, I don't care if you wanna kill this or table it or whatnot, would you allow me to speak with Dr. Dersfler in regards to what the insurance said? Obviously, I also had some concerns of what happens if there's disciplinary issues on a bus, stuff like that. But would you allow me to get some more information on the other end? Because obviously, I was, I, I was trying to think of the benefits. I didn't know what would happen, you know what, maybe that's what I should have done. Maybe I should have just thought of all the negatives, right? Usually, that, I can be objective enough and just be the Mr. Negative, but I'll do that the rest of this time. So I would motion that for now, I don't, well, I don't intend to make and, take any action on this other than communicating with Dr. Dersfler on this.
That's perfect, that's, that's, that's what we're asking for. And you have to keep in mind, you know, that anytime you're getting into any kind of contractual stuff, you have to figure out what the negatives are because the negatives are always gonna come to the surface. And then, then it's about how do you mitigate those negatives? So I, what, what you're trying to do here is positive stuff, but we just need to explore all the, all the nooks and crannies of it.
Thank you.
I'd be curious as to what the other schools in CISA do. You know, there's thirty-eight of our neighbors, like we just said. See if there's any, you know, any, any other schools in our neighborhood that do something like this.
I will ask, they do surveys all the time, this would just be the latest survey.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, having our homeschool kids being able to participate in sports and have them being able to participate in classes, I, I think that's all great. And, you know, to your point, I, you know, when you say like, to partner with the school, I think that's awesome. Do I want to necessarily say like, oh, I want you guys to give up? Like you said, you had like different reasons that you chose to homeschool. And if somebody is doing that like out of a faith-based curriculum or a school safety issue, none of that is going to change just based on transportation. To beg people to come to a public school system, I think that for those reasons that are very deeply rooted in people's lives and culture and what they want to bring, that's not going to happen by this. But I think for the people who are really just looking to, they haven't decided exactly where they want to go. This isn't necessarily faith-based or school safety related. They do want to explore some things in the public school system. I think it's awesome and I, we would love to have them here. But I'm also respectful of the reasons that people choose to homeschool their children instead of having them come to public school. And I think that has to be part of that reasoning too. So I think it would be fantastic to keep exploring this and move forward. You certainly don't need the board's permission to keep working with Sean to do that. You're a board member, you are afforded those rights as as somebody who's voted in here. And I think it's something fantastic that you brought for discussion. And I I think this board was willing to look at that and further that discussion. So would you like us to just kind of leave this and take no action on this at the moment?
Yes.
Okay, so moving along then to District Library Plan with Greta and Annie. I think you're squinting at me, me and Dale. It's Dale, I know you're squinting at Dale, but I know you're trying to see that board up there.
I am. Okay, so Greta and I are here tonight to present the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-six library plan. This is something that we have the, we've been tasked with creating and working through and it has to be given to DPI on a regular basis. So this one is up for approval and we've been working on just different pieces of this plan and setting goals. If you were to look through the whole document, there's a lot of information there. As we went to work on it, the Future Ready Library Framework is is where we started from and we built our goals and our library plan around that. Each of those pieces of that puzzle or that pie shape are different pieces that we're responsible for as librarians, whether it's for our students or for the district or for staff. We have just different pieces that we work with in the library. And so our library plan outlines all of those pieces and talks about things that we're currently doing in our libraries, whether it's collaboratively or individually, since our libraries are so very different. We have different things going on. So the library plan itself is pretty extensive. I don't know if you've gotten a chance to look through it at all yet, but it it lays out what we're currently doing for our staff and our students and then, and then where we're planning to go with that. So Greta has some goals that we've written and and that we're going to be working on over the next few years. So I'll look at it.
Yeah, so while this kind of, the document in section shows what we're currently doing to meet each kind of wedge of our Future Ready Framework, it doesn't, it kind of has a broad scope of everything we do. There's certainly a lot of things that we're doing on a day-to-day basis that aren't involved in this plan. So what we've done is we've outlined what we're currently doing. And then as you kind of look through the document, you'll see kind of scattered around some of the goals that we've decided to focus on for the next three years. And that's also kind of outlined at the end of the document where we bring all those goals together in a chart. And so I'm just, instead of talking through all the details of the plan, I'll just highlight the goals that we've chosen to work on and then invite you to have some discussion or questions for us afterwards. So the goals that we've identified, the first goal is that we would like to continue to foster a dynamic learning environment by collaborating with educators, local organizations and the community to bring in guest speakers, establish library resources and promote lifelong learning through effective communication and joint initiatives. And I do want to point out, as I'm going through these goals, these are things that we certainly have been working on for years. But these next few years, we just really want to dig in, really focus on and document even more how we're focusing on it and working through them. So goal number two is to foster collaborative partnerships with teachers and district staff by sharing educational resources, aligning instructional materials with triple E framework and supporting district goals through thoughtful evaluation and strategic recommendations for technology purchases and integration. Goal three is to develop and implement procedures to ensure privacy, safety and security of student data when using online instructional resources in the classroom. And goal number four is more for Annie and I to kind of wrap our brains around providing a scope and sequence for integrating Wisconsin Standards for Information and Technology Literacy. Those are standards that we teach in the library, but we want to make sure we're integrating those in the classroom curriculum as well. And so we have a scope and sequence throughout. So our goal number four is more just getting the framework set for this being a real goal in the next Future Ready Library Plan in the next three years after this. We also have some goals for how we use our Common School Fund budget. And the way we're focusing those is for goal number one, to increase community building and self-directed learning opportunities by the different materials that we're purchasing. Goal number two, to maintain a current and diverse collection. And goal number three, to purchase books and Makerspace tools to support classroom learning. So instead of being an island among ourselves, making sure we're really connecting and bringing in what what they're doing in classrooms and as well and teaching that alongside of them. So our, our goal with the library plan is to kind of get your feedback and ultimately to get your approval so that we can bring this to DPI.
It's an extensive amount of work.
Do any of you have questions or discussion pieces that you'd like?
No, I read through it and I expected nothing less from you. You guys are always so well organized with stuff. And, you know, when I started on the board and there was a conversation that happened revolving around you, Greta, and you came into a meeting with with me and Sean and just explained to me what the the library role was. And I'm guessing that the bulk of the public has no clue what you guys do and how involved you are in not only the students, but the teachers and the training of technology. And it's, I was always under the impression that all you did was scan books and put them back on the shelf.
You actually don't get to do that very much.
No, no. So again, you know, it's, there's a bunch of stuff in there and, but I wanted, outside of this, I wanted to thank you for the job that you and your teams all do because it's, it's so much larger than what people understand.
How many years have each of you been doing this now?
I'm getting close to fifteen.
I'm about half that, I'm about seven, I think, this year.
And what does this look like now with the digital world? Before, like, versus what it looked like prior to? Have you experienced changes and a shift in your goals and what you've had to do in the last even seven years or fifteen years? And how how does this look now compared to what it did back then?
You know, really, all along librarians have been tied to working with these things. But certainly along the way, they've firmed it up in in our Future Ready Framework and showing everyone all the pieces that we're involved with. And it's definitely become much more heavy on the technology side of it as more technology has been integrated, along with the Makerspaces and so many more tools that we're using with our students. So it it just keeps adding on, but it's what we love in our job, that everything's different all the time. And we get to, we get to be part of all these different aspects of our school district. So it's, I think it's one of the best jobs in the whole, in the whole district, just because it involves so much. But it certainly has changed quite a bit over time. I think I came in to it as everything was changing and shifting. And so I, it's been a part of my job all along, I guess, in the fifteen years.
You know, our music teachers disagree with you. They think that their job is the best job, is the job.
Well, everyone does, but we really believe it.
An extensive amount of time and really a lot of detail, which I appreciated here, so.
Do we still buy many books, like hardcover books?
We buy a lot of books, yes.
I saw John answer.
I think if you stepped into the library over there, you'd see the collection that we do curate. And it's, it is pretty extensive. Our kids still get very excited about books, excited about checking them out, telling us what they're reading about, asking for more. It's still very lovely in the library, even though technology, I love technology, but I love a good book better.
We really try to balance all those pieces out because really at the core, the love of reading and and books is is really what we focus on. And and in the budget, you can see we're kind of outlining year by year where we're spending different percentage of our budget on the different items, technology versus books versus online software. And that's going to shift year by year based on, you know, what's going on. Like last year, we had a much larger budget given to us, the Common School Fund budget from the state of Wisconsin, which was amazing. And five or six years into our Makerspace, that extra funds, it was really nice to be able to switch out our technology and start rotating those devices. So some years, while it looks like we're kind of, the numbers are skewed and we're spending more on technology than books in some, like especially the middle school and high school, really, we're still buying a lot of books. It's just sometimes these extra funds allow us to do some of those larger technology purchases.
They they have a very daunting task, which is they're not funded until January and they have until May to spend. And it's kind of a crapshoot, frankly, of what that amount's going to be. Now, it's increased every year for the last quite a few years. And in some years, it's been rather substantial, which is great. But then they also have to navigate this incredibly detailed list of allowable and non-allowable expenses. And it gets, it gets a little, little complicated a little bit. So they spend a lot, but a very, less than ten percent of their total budget actually comes from the taxpayers here. The rest of it is funded through Common School Fund, which is very unique.
Yeah, and that's what I found interesting in that conversation that I had where, what what brought up the conversation was in a different meeting, Greta says, well, I can take that out of my budget. And I just went, your budget? I got to understand what's going on here, you know, so, yeah, very unique position.
Wisconsin is very fortunate to have a Common School Fund budget. It allows for really robust programs in the library. We really are fortunate. And and that's where us collaborating with classroom teachers only helps the district because when we align with the library, the budget that we spend helps the classrooms as well. But we do have very specific items that we can spend the money on, so it's a very structured list. And and that's a large part of our job is making sure that we're, all of our purchases are falling in line with what's allowed.
So you're doing a bunch of analytics then to track your process through these? Are these goals just goals you have to have for DPI?
What we're gonna, what Annie and I are planning on doing, we track, you know, the best we can. But our plan is to, every year, we have SLOs and PPGs that we have to have for our educator effectiveness. And we're going to take some of these goals and specifically document them with our statistics and data and different documents to support what we're doing.
Yeah, the way they're written right now is not super smart goal-ish. And that would be what we want to work on in the future is making sure it's a smart goal that we can provide evidence for and make, maybe include some artifacts of what we're purchasing, where we're purchasing it, how we're using it, just how we're following through with those goals. Because as we write this and we look at it, we're like, this looks great on paper. How are we going to hold ourselves accountable?
Right.
We really want to hold each other accountable to these goals.
And that was the reason I asked the question because, you know, I know through business, you you can sit down and have all the goals written down. But unless you focus on two or three of them, you're not going to accomplish much, so.
A way to evaluate how you did, right? Okay.
So you need a motion to approve this?
I believe we do so that we can submit it to DPI.
Yes, yes, you do.
Thank you.
I would make a motion, we approve the document as presented.
Second, Gwen? It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the library plan for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-six as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of approving the Emory School District Library Plan for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-two, two twenty, two thousand and twenty-six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. The School District Library Plan is approved. You can go ahead and present that to DPI. They'll love that.
Thank you very much.
You.
Thanks, ladies. Okay, and then moving on then to proposed new courses with Mrs. D'Ambrogio.
Yes, on November seventh, we had a Curriculum Oversight Committee meeting, which is a diverse committee full of members actually from each building. And then a board member is invited to be a part of that committee as well. And so when we are looking or seeking to add new coursework, in particular at the high school or if we're looking at a new curriculum, we bring this committee together to talk about the different courses that we're seeking to add. So two high school courses were on the docket to be reviewed. So Mr. Gould and Ms. Ramona Lockwood had come with two different syllabi. And so the first one that we had conversation regarding was TED one hundred Introduction to Teaching. Josh, do you want to highlight some of the points of this course offering?
Both of these courses were DACP offerings through University of Wisconsin River Falls. They approached us actually at a CTE conference where our, our leadership team that's mentoring other schools on our CTE stuff, it was brought up by the River Falls people that, in Richmond and a couple of other schools that they partnered with, were having really good success with this. And that we want to look at another option here. And for kids, we thought was a great opportunity to get college credit. And and they actually on the spot kind of looked over the credentials and said, well, Ramona, tell us about your credentials, what you have for licensures. Because you have to get approved. She has Ed Leadership Master's Degree that covered it. And so they said, yeah, if you want to get these courses passed, you'd have a teacher that would be certified by UWRF. So each of these is three credit course classes. Now, there's no guarantee we would have enough kids to run the courses, but that's the case with all of our electives that we introduce. So it's a good opportunity for kids going into the field.
If you add something like this, do you have to take something else off or you just see what fills?
You know, we we do student surveys every year. And so hypothetically, maybe we offer one less Microsoft Office course or something, depending on where the numbers are at.
Same question I had, Steve. Joe, you are the board member on the committee. I know you you had an alternate thing that you couldn't attend that day. Were you able to connect with Mrs. D'Ambrogio regarding the the classes or that that meeting? If you had questions or concerns?
No, just for a few moments and then she got pulled away for IT issues at her last meeting.
Okay, I didn't know if you were able to reconnect with her after that or not, so.
We just had a few minutes.
Okay, so do you have any thoughts looking over the materials? I want to, I give you kind of the first choice at this, obviously, since you're part of that committee. Do you have any input in this?
No.
No, okay.
I have a question. Is this, is this run, is each one of these a semester or do they partner up to be a semester?
The recommend, each of them is a semester course. The recommendation was to run the TED one hundred first. And if you're able to do both, to do the TED two fifty in the spring. That was their suggestion. And to be honest, I, I don't know what kind of interest we're going to have from students. But, you know, in talking to some of the kids right now that go over to the elementary intermediate school, they're like, oh, I wish you guys would have had this last year. Well, I can say that about all the new classes we develop.
One of the questions I did ask are either of these courses preparing a high school student for someone who maybe isn't necessarily driven to be an educator after taking them, whereas, you know, as they get older, they navigate their first couple of years of college. And Ramona had shared that, you know, based on the content, the syllabi, what was being taught, what was being focused, really, either, either of these courses will really help any student that goes into either leadership, healthcare. She felt like it might just give a broad range of skills and knowledge if someone decided not to go into education as well.
They're always going to have the three or six credits elective credit, whatever, on there in the arches River Falls trans. in the arches River Falls transcript.
I, I, I didn't, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dale.
So I was just going to ask, so each one of these courses semester long, three credits?
Correct.
Right? So you could potentially finish a year of school, high school with six credits from these two classes?
Correct.
Very easily transfer to River Falls for sure and likely other?
It's on a River Falls transcript. So using a program they call Transferology, it could transfer to any university.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. The Ted, the Ted 100 and the Ted 250 are the River Falls, um, I think codes for those.
Correct.
Um, so if you pass, you get those automatically in your teaching, in your, um, going towards your teaching certificate, your degree. Um, I think, I had to take similar courses to this. Uh, when I went through my teacher licensure, I think, you know, obviously we all have, and, um, you're talking now, I mean, back when I took, because now I'm old, but when I was in college, it was roughly a hundred dollars a credit. Now I think it's like $300 in undergrad credit. So these are like $900 each.
Yeah.
You know, and that's in today's world now, UW River Falls just went through two tuition hikes in the last year. So that was fun because I have a kid who goes to River Falls. So yay. So this, you're looking at a, a potential of over a thousand dollars, um, savings for kids that maybe want to go into teaching. So that's a, that's a pretty cool deal. And I have to say, um, I took a lot more psychology than, um, I had to as part of my electives and I didn't, I didn't get that opportunity in high school to do any of those things. And obviously I'm not teaching anymore, but all very valuable information. So, uh, to Jessica's point, you can use these, uh, pretty much anywhere. So. Is there a motion to, uh, accept the proposed courses then?
Yes, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept both courses, the Ted 100 and the Ted 250.
Second. Dale and Gwen, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the new courses as presented. Um, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, sure. When we did have an opportunity to discuss, uh, obviously I think both of these are great if kids go to them. Um, again, I looked at the, all the courses, uh, that we offered, uh, that is in our, uh, the thing they received in the mail, the district, uh, mail that you sent us?
Newsletter.
The newsletter. Thank you ma'am. And, um, you know, I, I looked at a lot of those are not for me. You know, those are AP courses. Those are for smart people. So, um, I was, that's why I asked, are there any for like CDLs? Has the school district ever thought about looking into a CDL? You know, for?
I can answer that.
I think Unity does it, right?
People like me.
Um, so we, we currently partner, it's, it's one of the Start College Now options through Northwood Tech. Um, so that is, we have had a kid that's taken the CDL program through the Start College Now program. Um, I think he, I think he's still driving trucks someplace too. You know, the CDL is a little bit, you have to be 18 to sign up for that program. But, uh, just like any of the programs they offer at Northwood Tech, whether it's CDL, CDL, um, we offer a lot of tech opportunities through them. You know, the weldings, those are all Start College Now programs. Actually, the difference about those is the district 100% pays the cost of those for the kids and in DACP, the families pay for the credits.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that Start College Now is a huge thing. In fact, um, my kid is a 2020 graduate and he's just going to get a CDL now and it was $2,200. So, um, yeah.
Well, I paid 4,300, but great deal.
Yeah. And if you go to Army, you can get your CDL too, or, uh, I should say Armed Forces a lot of times. If you're MLSS truck driving, get your CDL through there too.
Yeah, well, I know how that worked out.
Yep.
So, uh, well, thank you. I just wanted to, that, that was another thing we mentioned. Um, but yeah, I'm ready for a vote.
Okay. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All of those in favor of approving the Ted 100 and Ted 250 classes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. The proposed new courses of Ted 100 and 250 are passed and good luck. I hope you get a ton of, uh, ton of people signing up for those. It's a great, great value. Moving on to.
It seemed like we had a year long school. They can get it all in.
Yeah, you can do the whole thing. Moving on to substitute teacher pay. Dr. Dierfler, you're up.
Okay. This has been a subject of conversation for some time. You have voted over the course of the last decade to incrementally increase the amount of money that a sub makes in a day. Uh, way back in the day it was 90, then 100, then 115, then 120, then it's 130. What you'll see here is the comparables of 12 of our neighbors and our competitors for subs, if you will. This is a September of 2024 surveyed number from CISA 11. So that shows you where the competition sits, if you will, and you'll see where we sit. So that's the point from which we can begin some conversation, I imagine. There is a need for subs. We do have a dwindling population. We're hiring some of our subs. Some of them are snowbirds who go south and some simply have dropped out of the sub pool since they're not interested in doing it anymore. And yes, we probably have lost subs to some of our neighbors who have a more competitive wage. That is certainly true too.
It looks like it's an influence of being closer to the cities.
Uh, very well could be. I know that the, uh, the competition for a St. Croix Central isn't Amory, Clayton, Clear Lake. The competition for a St. Croix Central is New Richmond and Hudson. The competition for Hudson is jumping across the river in River Falls. So it's, I mean, yes, very geographic. For us, our neighbors are, are what you see here by and large.
Why are we always behind? I swear we, we keep raising.
Well, when we moved it to 130, literally within that week, I got notification from, uh, Osceola that they had just moved theirs to 140. I'm like, well, thank you. This is literally the same.
Could we've gotten together on this first?
I don't know, whatever. So we're at 130 and we've been so for the last four or five years.
It would seem like we should increase it. Um, do you have a number?
My, my proposal would be to increase it to 140 or 150. And John can talk to you about the financials of what that would mean. But that would be my proposal based on what you see on this page.
Uh, it's, it's, it's a very much a moving target as far as what the actual budget implication would be. Um, obviously in, in a perfect world that all the teachers are here, 184 student contact days a year and we never have to utilize subs. The reality is that's not the case. So you have to kind of average it out. So our average is about five certified staff members that are gone per day. Simple math, that would either be 50 or a hundred dollars increase a day, which would be a grand total of somewhere between 15 and $30,000 increase per year. Now, when you look at our salary budgeting as a whole, we are a very conservative district as far as salary budgeting is concerned. Um, so there is wiggle room in that just based off of the fact that we always have open positions, if that makes sense, in other areas, in the support staff areas and, and so on and so forth. So it's, I, I think it's a needed one. You know, we've discussed this at length as far as what it looks like is, um, to, just to be sitting in Jill Jackson's shoes and not having anyone to call on because they're making 10, $20 more per day by going to some other districts. Now will we ever compete with New Richmond? Absolutely not. Um, but I, I do believe that it is within the, the scope of our salary budget to absorb 10 to 20 dollars.
Do we offer lunch to our subs right now, right?
We do.
I thought that was something that we added in maybe a year ago, two years ago?
Yep, last year.
Did we add that in?
You had a rectangular piece of pizza.
I would love a rectangular piece of pizza. I'd give anything to come back for school pizza.
Yeah. I, it, it depends on the, it just, satisfaction level depends on the building. Because what they are offered by Darcy at the high school is a little different than what it's at the elementary school.
It's been how long since we changed this?
Changed what?
Went up to 130.
The sub rate? I think it's been three years.
Three years, I believe. Yeah.
So you said 10 to 20, so maybe 15 is a good number?
Yeah. I, for budgetary purposes, the number I would put in there would be 15. When I kind of look at everything and average it out throughout the course of entire school year, it's hard to pin down because if I do a three year average, that number is more towards 10. If I do a two year average, that number's more towards 20. So it, it really just depends on when certified staff are here and when certified staff are gone.
Now, and we have kind of a, um, a different situation going on here versus, I don't know, maybe how like some of our neighbor, neighbors run their school district days. But clearly like if you're subbing for a whole day at the elementary school or, um, intermediate school versus subbing at the high school, um, our high school runs a block schedule. Um, and so there's a, there's like a night, 90 minute, is it 90 minute classes? Help me out.
Yes.
Um, so there's a, a, always a prep, right, that's in there. Um, and so, um.
A lot of times that gets balanced out though. Like if we have multiple teachers gone, a sub might cover three of the four and.
That's where I was going.
Sometimes, do they have that entire block? Yes. Sometimes do they not have any? That happens.
That's where I was going. Um, yes. Thank you, Josh. That's, that's exactly where I was going or kind of, I think we've been talking about.
Sure. One, one other thing I would add, even our district subs in Amory, they kind of have their niche, their area where they fit in high school and where, and where they feel comfortable.
Where they like to be. Yes. And yes, where they really shine and do a better job.
And where they refuse to go.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. Um, so, and we've talked about having some of our, um, teachers that are at high school. If they're willing to, in some cases, go to the elementary school or the intermediate school, if there's guest speakers in those, kind of those prep blocks so that they can help relieve for some of our regular teachers. It doesn't happen often, but we've talked about that. So there's some added responsibility in there. So, um, just that we've been creative in the district with how we use people's times and, and what they're being paid for.
Well, Joe has to be really creative.
Yes.
In order to cover it all, as do the building administrators.
I just, I just wasn't sure if the rest of the board was aware of, sometimes that happens with some of our subs. So. Okay. So discussion. So, um, we're thinking your target salary would be around 140. John?
Jonathan's conversation with me, we were somewhere between 10 and 20 and I believe 15 is a happy medium. So 145 would be your new age if that's what you want to do.
145 would put you right in the middle of that group.
Yeah.
Two and, and 145. If you were to just, you know, I recognize inflation has been crazy last handful of years, but if you talked about your typical cost of living increases, 145 puts you right in that ballpark over that three to four year period.
And, and Jill did mention when, when we had that meeting that some of the subs, she is hearing subs making decisions off of as little as a $5 per day increase because that's 25 bucks a week. So when you, when you start talking about getting closer to that 150, I think that makes it a, a lot more easy to come to Amory than it does going to, uh, a Clayton or Clear Lake every time.
Do you typically look at this every couple of years or do you look at it every year?
We do.
Every year or every?
Uh, we haven't looked at it every year, but most years.
I would make a motion for 145, an increase to 145.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to increase sub pay from $130 a day to $145 per day. Is there any?
More discussion.
I'm calling for it right now. So it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Go ahead, Joe.
Jonathan, in regards to the big picture budget, again, I keep going back to the fact we've already told our taxpayers, we're going to raise their taxes 4% for every 100,000, right? $40 for every 100,000.
Correct.
Bingo. Right?
Yeah. And it's not.
Long day here.
Uh, yeah. And, and I, I do want to clarify, it's not us raising their taxes. We're, that would imply that we're taking on additional burden and we're not taking on additional burden. The split is different per the state calculation, but I don't like the, the verbiage of we are adding that because it wasn't a, a decision that we.
It's a, it's a revenue limit.
Correct. It's correct. But yes, to your point, yes.
Okay. Cause, because of a whole bunch of totality of circumstances in our environment right now, everyone's property taxes are going up.
True statement.
As broad as I can get it. Um, do we have the funding to pay 145 within a budget?
Yes, I believe that we do.
Okay.
Without shaving anything.
Because at a strategic plan meeting, when I asked, are we really going to raise taxes when every, when every teach, when our teachers need and deserve a fair and equitable wage increase, are we going to raise taxes? Now, or are we going to start looking like I told you at attrition? And you had questioned me, force attrition or natural attrition? And I sure hope we're going to start looking at natural attrition so we can get a student population to teacher ratio appropriate, whether, because I think the issue we're going to have with declining enrollment is that we're going to end up having 14 kids per classroom.
I don't think so.
We, we.
We have it.
Yeah. That, that's a discussion that we talk about quite commonly in the district office is that topic of natural attrition. And it's, it's, you know, we, we talk about where the bubbles are. The district admin team talks about it very commonly. We know where our bubbles are. We know where they're not. Um, we have teachers that move accordingly. We have teachers that leave accordingly. So it, it just depends on, on which one we're talking about, but we do talk about natural attrition quite often.
Do, does, does getting classrooms back to, again, I, back to the old days of 1999 of 24 kids per classroom help out the budget?
Yeah. I mean, anytime you reduce, you reduce a full-time certified staff member, you're talking about a net positive impact to your budget of at least a hundred thousand dollars by the time you, you, you take everything into effect. And that's just for your average, call it level C2 teacher. When you start talking about our masters level teachers, our I eights, it's another thing that we talk about quite often because there's a difference between a retiring I8 that's got a masters degree and that's a reading specialist and what their budget impact is and what a second year level A1 or A2 teacher would be. And so those are the types of things that we talk about in our budgetary cycle and that I'd be happy to go through with you guys during a budgetary planning meeting that we had discussed in the past before, um, because those are the types of things that we talk about when we're looking at it. Now, it'll be a little bit different of a process, budgetary process this year than last year because Twila is no longer with us. Um, but we've always, we've always historically, um, budgeted off of actual plus what their actual increase would be, not a blanket percentage increase, which is what most districts do. So I feel like our biggest accuracy point in our budget has always been salary and fringe benefits, which is why when we start talking about these 10, $20,000 increases or decreases, I feel confident in that number just simply because of how sure I am of those budgets. Um, for instance, last year, the biggest budget line item that we came in under budget for was on salaries and fringes. So I, I think no matter which way we skin the cap, we're not talking about adding, uh, 3.5% across the board increase to teachers right now. We're just talking about 10 to $15,000 to make sure that we have adequate levels of subs. And to me, I think that we can confidently absorb that into our budget without having any sort of budgetary impact or tax impact. Did that answer your question?
It, it did. And I, again, I hate the idea that we're, I think that we're shortening our subs because of a bigger underlying issue that we're dealing with. I don't like the idea of, I don't like the idea of Amory being in the middle. I like us to be one of the best.
I understand that, but we still have to make sure we're within the budget. That's why.
That's why I'm asking him.
That's why I want to know if we, if we visit it every year because every year could be different. What the need is, I don't think that we should, I don't think that should be something that we just look at every three years.
Well, again, I'm, that's exactly why I'm asking him. I think if we were to actually look at some of the underlying issues that we have, again, if we start, I mean, it's not a, declining enrollment is no, is not a crisis. It's not a problem. It's a normality that's been occurring since I've left school. It's a normality at this point.
Well, the attrition schedule for staff is created. If you want to sit around in, in closed session, we could do it tonight. You can see it. It's done. It goes all the way back to 2018, 2017. It goes all towards 2027. It's already a finished document minus the names because I don't know who's retiring in the spring. But we had planned to talk about that in March, but it is a document that demonstrates the reduction in staff numbers over the course of that time and the names are associated with it if you want to see it.
Since I asked for it, I think we should.
Okay.
I'm ready for a vote.
Uh, do you, is there interest in withdrawing the motion in light of asking for further documentation? Or are we proceeded, are we prepared to move ahead with the vote and leave it as is for current time? And then possibly, the possibility of revisiting it?
I'll leave that up to Joe. If he's happy with what I made a motion on.
I am 145.
All right, it has been properly moved and seconded to increase subpay for, um, the, uh, substitute teacher pay from one thirty to one forty-five. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of increasing subpay from one thirty to one forty-five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Uh, substitute teacher pay will be increased to one hundred and forty-five dollars per day. All right, and then moving on to donations to the district. Mr. Dierfler.
Uh, donations to the district, we have, uh, two by Michael. Larry Cool, thank you for the donation of twenty-five hundred dollars to the Amory High School Ag Academy Fund. And Doors of Distinction, thank you for the tour of your, of your facility and for donating one thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars worth of wood to the advanced woodworking class for their projects.
I don't know if you guys have ever been out to Doors of Distinction. It's quite, quite the facility. The equipment they have there is insane.
Where's that?
It's way out of town. It's, um, it's out past Wapo. It's actually closer to C than it is, or sixty-five and C than it is out here, but what's crazy is, you know, they don't advertise because it's all word of mouth and it's, and, and they're like the, um, what was the big mansion on, in the cities, um, the Pillsbury Mansion? When whoever was, I think it was the owner of Cambria bought that?
Yeah.
And they called these guys and it's like, this is, this is what I want for Doors, and I mean, they're just, they're, they're backlog like crazy and, um, they're looking for good, qualified people, and so if any of those kids end up working for them, it's a good place to work.
Very cool. Always blown away by the, um, different kinds of donations that we get. This is, this is awesome. What a, what an addition.
Take, take some time and go onto the website and look at the kind of stuff they, they produce. Pretty amazing.
Cool, thanks, Steve.
I'll make a motion. We accept the donations as presented with many, many thanks.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Dale and Joe, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the donations as presented with many thanks. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor of accepting these donations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Donations accepted. Thank you, and what a round of applause. Very cool addition. Okay, and personnel action. Dr. Dierfler.
Uh, new employment and extracurricular contracts for Matea Allen, clubhouse lead teacher, Emily Ruslin, regular Ed Para, Lily Burke, regular Ed Para, Alisa Sisneros, clubhouse, clubhouse assistant teacher, Taran Hale, custodian, Walker Ingham, high school assistant wrestling coach, Julie Langivan for custodian, Ashley Long, specialized teacher, and resignations, both in a, for high school assistant football coach, Larry Doten, and Andrew Erickson.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel action as approved?
I'll make that motion.
Steve, is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to, uh, accept personnel action as, uh, presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passes. We approve the personnel action items as presented. And-
Say, Shar.
Yes.
Is it possible, is it possible I could take back my closed session ask?
We will get to that right after we have community comments.
Not bad.
It's fine. We'll, we'll, we'll get to that right after that. Um, so, community comments is next, and we do have Stephanie Jansen signed up for community comments, and I'll read the guidelines for addressing the Board of Education. Uh, you may address the board only during community comments time on the board meeting agenda. Any resident, district employee, or guest invited by the board may make comments about any decision, policy, or board meeting agenda items. The following guidelines have been established for addressing the Amory Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign-up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted, the sign-up sheet is deemed to be out of order. The presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Community comments must pertain to a board decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Comment time is limited to five minutes per person. However, the time limit may be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding board member. Political speeches, which are materially related to board decisions, policies adopted by the board, or are not about a board meeting agenda item, are strictly forbidden. Personal criticism of board members of the Board of Education or employees of the high school district are also strictly forbidden. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, state your name and the municipality and where you live for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will get back to you with a response. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda for a future board meeting. Please you leave your name and contact information if you wish to be contacted by a member of the board or the district administrator regarding your community comment. With that, I'm out of breath, so thanks. Stephanie, you can take over.
Uh, Stephanie Jansen, Garfield Township. Since the beginning of this referendum, we have heard over and over from the district that enrollment is going up. Two years ago, I wrote an article in the paper addressing the concern for district enrollment, only to be called a liar and accused of spreading misinformation, and to quote the article, "The truth matters." Here we are, almost three years out from the referendum's passing, and the numbers don't lie. Enrollment is down just over ten percent. It's down nearly five hundred students in nineteen years. Down a hundred and forty-seven enrollments since the referendum passed. Why wasn't a population study polled before bringing this referendum to our community members? I think it would be very important to see the trends in population for our area when making such a huge investment of taxpayers' dollars to truly understand the future needs and impact of investment. There's information to support that we have had as much as twenty-five percent decrease in population here in our municipalities and a decrease of up to eighteen percent among children ages zero to four. Would knowing that have changed the direction and decision around our referendum? Our district made an eight point five million dollar investment into a building that has historically held more students than it does today. Today's enrollment in that building is three hundred and twenty-one. The twenty twenty-one school year was three seventy-five. The seventeen eighteen school year held three hundred and ninety-nine students. And ten years ago, in the, in two thousand thirteen fourteen school year, the elementary school held four hundred and twenty-one students. That's a loss of a hundred students in ten years in one building. After an investment was made into that building for daycare, there are still sixty-five, and this is prior to, uh, the presentation today. So there are sixty-five plus children waiting on the list for daycare. I understand the logistics, breaking these kids down into age groups and different classrooms. However, it was believed that this investment of eight point five million dollars was made to fit the needs of our community. This discussion and need for daycare is now being picked up at the city, and should the city decide to move forward in building a daycare, it will push the tax burden once again on our taxpayers. This lack of accountability will directly impact taxpayers and families of the students who fill your halls, students whose parents are already struggling, families and taxpayers living paycheck to paycheck, on fixed incomes, many who may already be struggling to make their mortgage or buy groceries. I heard a comment made in this room a few months ago that we can expect an increase in enrollment with COVID babies. This is just another opinion. And there is enough evidence to suggest that during COVID, there were more mental health issues, deaths, and divorces than procreation. That there was actually a decrease in birth rate, not to mention the cultural influence on the sterilization of young men and women. These theories and predictions can be put to rest in the community by simply doing a population study. The operations at the district don't look sustainable for our future, and I believe our strategic planning needs to address that specifically. I'm not naive to think that we should not invest in our buildings and grounds. However, some key decisions and facts were neglected when considering how the district should move forward. I'm not here to argue. I'm very concerned with the district and the direction we're headed. My apologies for not making the last strategic planning meeting, uh, to offer my constructive criticism. My family had prior commitments. I'm here today to ask the board to reconsider their purchase of a district survey and instead invest in a population study to better understand the changes projected in our community and move the district forward. Will our district enrollment continue to fall? How will future enrollment impact our community, our budget? Are there other options for our district and community using existing resources? Does the district need to look at consolidation? If we consolidate, can we better meet the needs of our community with a daycare? Could we lease the building back to the community and expand on community ed programs? Extend open gym hours for things like pickleball, walking during the winter months, rental space for events, et cetera? I understand there's a lot of logistics to consider, and these ideas might not even work. The point is that there needs to be a different solution rather than continuously tapping the taxpayers' pockets. I'm also asking that the board join its surrounding districts in publishing the monthly vouchers, the expense, the expenses or receipts approved by the board. The community deserves more than a simple "vouchers look good to me" from board members. There's a lack of trust in the community, and publishing the monthly expenses would clear up any misinformation and assumptions regarding some of the district's spending. Lastly, I'm asking for all of us to set our differences aside and work together for transparency, accountability, and communication with the public to move our district forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then last would be closed session. Is there any need to go into closed session at this point?
Sorry, that was me a, a little bit ago. I was just going to ask, uh, Dr. Dierfler, is there any opportunity to just put whatever document you have? I, I, I never wanted names. I just wanted a document that just had the numbers.
It's got everything you would want and more.
But, but that's my point, is I don't want, I don't want that specific, sir. I just want to know the attrition rate. I want to know, I want to know really just what we can, it almost help-
Well, I'm looking at it right now. I'm looking at it right now. There's a slide here titled Elementary School. That's got two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty, twenty-one through two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, and it's all numbers. There aren't any names whatsoever, and the intermediate school has the exact same document in a different format, so.
So, and in light of, uh, Mrs. Jansen's comments just now about transparency to the public, could we just put this on next month instead of going into closed session now? Can we just put this on next month as an informational item and just talk simply about declining enrollment, attrition, and how it looks and what, I mean, we've already talked about this a couple of times. I know you have those documents. In light of that, um, I think we could just bring it on as an informational item next month.
It isn't a personnel item, and that is just numbers.
Right.
The, the names would be personnel.
Right, we could just redact the names out of there and just have the-
There's no need to redact. It's just numbers.
We talk about this when we actually talk about our compensation every year. We've, we've done this every year, so I, we had this information last year, so it shouldn't be anything new. I know you have that information. Can we simply just put it on for next month's agenda? Okay, so we'll note to put that as an informational item on next month's agenda. We won't have to go into closed session then. Is that good with you?
Lovely.
Okay, so do I, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Steve and Joe, it's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, please signify by saying no. Meeting adjourned.